All is meeting in order. Like allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any conflicts of interest on today's agenda?
I believe no.
Motion to approve the agenda. Second motion, second, on favor side. Hi. We had a little bit of discussion about this, I'll be quick. At the NCO, it's typically the auditor chair. You guys can put stuff on the, on the agenda, but it was kind of interesting, they said, where the approval of the agenda is how the rest of the board can have input on whether they think an item is appropriate or not.
Oh, I don't know if I heard that, maybe that was in your.
That might have been in my supervisor's session up, when we were together, I just thought that was in there, that kind of gives checks and balances how to approve an agenda.
Can I ask a question about that then, for clarification? So, if I read my agenda on a Friday night and I'm wondering why we're going to talk about something, I should save it until reviewing the agenda and say, I don't think we're ready to talk about something, or is that?
Well, I think, I still think it's.
Not what you're saying?
No, no, I just think if there's something that comes up in between, that happens, that it just gets the board's flexibility to, you know, approve the agenda or change it at, right now at this time. But I think if you have a question or concern, it's better to get ahead of it and ask.
Okay.
So. With that, nine oh five, Steve Holt, I did talk to him yesterday. He said there wasn't really a lot to relay back.
So far.
So far, so, we're going to keep him on the agenda during session, and if he has nothing to report or can't, we'll just move on.
Good.
So, but we did have a good talk. I did send him Sarah's report from the recorder's office, and Sherry put together a report for me that shows the services they provide and how much we keep as a county and how much goes on to the state. Which Steve wanted that information because if they get into some other property tax reform or discussion that he can say, my own, my personal county, and here's what the state's taking, here's what the county keeps.
And to help us reduce property taxes, help us increase labor tax, or labor fees.
Which some of the increased fees that are going to go into effect, like.
I don't mean increase the fee, but increase our cut.
Well, right, that too, but there are some increases in fees that are going to help the revenue as well, like that. No, one where you can go to any county and get additional ten dollars for licensing. I think that'll.
That's happening now, isn't it?
That's happening now, and there's some legislation that.
First the recorder's office.
Yep.
Are they going to increase the fees?
Some of those fees haven't been increased since the seventies or eighties.
Do you, do you know, because I've got me thinking, then, all the way up to the district court, are there fees there that are collected that go on to the state?
I wouldn't have.
And do we know, I guess, does the assessor do anything from, I would like to ask the assessor, maybe I'll ask him, if there's anything that he passes on to the state? I do want to think that there is, because Terry, there's nothing in your office that you pass on to the state, right? It's just the recorder and treasurer's office on this floor.
Right. We pay, we pay fees to the secretary of state for the iVoters. It's a software that manages voter registrations that we all use, every, every county uses. We pay.
Is that to help pay for the program?
We pay some fees on that.
Yours is a little different though, because.
But it's different.
Your cost is, is the elections.
Yeah.
Which we are mandate, you know, we have to provide, fund it. It doesn't bring in revenue, but it's still a cost that we provide that service to the state.
Right. There's a few elections that we get to share those costs with, but not very many.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on to reading of the minutes.
January fourteen, twenty twenty-five, the board supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mulbauer, chair presiding, members present, Schultz, Dozart, Mulbauer, Hayden, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the sheriff's office quarterly report for October twenty-four through December twenty-four. The board approved recorder's office quarterly report for October twenty-four through December twenty-four. Board approved the change of wage for Cole Town Regular Part-Time Bridge Crew Engineers' Office. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to rescind previous motion to appoint Roger Kinkle as weed commissioner from January seven, twenty twenty-five. Meeting motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg, to appoint Allen Hanson as weed commissioner upon his approval. Motion passed unanimously. Kevin Green with KTIV spoke with the board about installing a weather camera on the courthouse roof. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Hayden, to approve the installation of a weather camera on the courthouse roof. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made with the board by Wendy Mueller via Zoom from West Central Community Action, presenting this year in review and, and a funding request of four thousand dollars fiscal year twenty-four. West Central Community Action provided one million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred nine dollars worth of services to Crawford County residents. Amy Piper with the Crawford County Historic Preservation Commission gave the board an update about the dismantling and relocation, relocating of the Bell Cabin. There are grants that can, that they can apply for, but they need support from the community. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Hayden, to contribute four thousand dollars to the Bell Cabin for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion passed unanimously. Sarah Messick, recorder, gave the board a quarterly update. There, there has been increase in passports. On motion duly seconded, board adjourned at eleven AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Any corrections to the minutes?
No.
And that's our approved. On to the supervisory reports. Kyle.
Real quick, we had a solid waste commission meeting last Thursday night and put over the budget for next fiscal year. Somebody probably have paperwork laying on your desk, because we're not in here. Nothing major going on there, just. I spent a lot of time, but I do want to go over the weed commissioner's report. It was, it's in her packet, she was in the packet, and then it's, we need to get it approved. So I, did you take it out? Because I didn't see it in there. I did, I did. Okay. I just thought we'd go over it quick, so we could get a stamp. It's pretty. I don't know, not much to it, really, if you're, you're around. The noxious weeds I found in the county is pretty similar to every other year. McCorn, steel by weed, you know, they like passing around, but. Anything that pointed out to me, nothing really stuck out. Individuals, contacted ten individuals privately, in a verbal, so. I used to, Jason, I talked to him, and he just looked over, he didn't really have a lot of time, his, his first dude, other job really overwhelmed him last year and all the printing and stuff that he does on a, where's a full-time job, that's why he chose not to be interested in it this year again. So I passed that around, and he just didn't make it, and they didn't give the reports. He asked if he could just drop it off.
Do we need to have it on the agenda for group, or?
Well, it's, it's on approval of claims, twenty, twenty-one weed commissioners report.
There you go, yep.
I think we can stamp it and approve it. It's already late, so with that.
So with our new hire then, is he going to be able to attend the weed classes and all that? Did we have a discussion with him about that? To, gotta get signed up for that rural path, I think. It's pooling that they attend.
You got a hold of the.
I got a hold of Mr. Hanson, and he was going to, I think, stop in and talk to Terry. And maybe give you whatever information you need from him as a hire, and then he was going to move forward on looking into what he needs to do for classes and what's available.
I will provide some information about that.
He hasn't come in yet.
I was gone.
Just kind of last week.
Okay, we got a nine one one commission meeting tomorrow night, and we are going to talk about the office space and see if we can figure out with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Great.
Had a Wesco board meeting last night, and. I believe I can publicly announce this, and I'm going to publicly announce this, because we're having a tour, but Wesco purchased JP flooring building right on Highway thirty, and we're going to tour that next Monday at noon. The board of Wesco is going to tour that, and their plan right now is to move the bake shop from where it currently is down to Highway thirty, put in a drive-through, so they will have drive-through services, and then they're going to use the rest of the building kind of as a Wesco training center for their employees. So that's kind of big news for them. Financially, Wesco's doing very well, it's probably one of their, it is so far to date, their best year financially that they've ever had. First meeting that their new CFO, Marcus Rander, reporting to the board, he's going to be a great asset. Gene, you had a question or comment?
I did, concerning that building, is that building going to be tax exempt?
Yes, it will.
Yes, it will, okay.
What will they do with current?
They're renting that, so go back to the Donna Reed Foundation, I guess, and Donna Reed will do with it what they want. But just kind of from a size standpoint, the bake shop is, is not a moneymaker for, for Wesco. They would like it, of course, to be, but we'd like it to lose less money than it currently is losing, and we just can't do it at that facility because you can't get the number of people in there that you want to. And within with moving it down there will be probably four times bigger than the room that they have.
If you've ever been in the kitchen below, it's amazing that they can get anything accomplished down there, because that is not a very useful kitchen.
I don't think I've been in there.
If I remember right, many years ago, they were looking at closing the doors, remember that, Kyle? And they had a donor or two donors come in and help.
Yep, I remember that.
Remember that?
I remember it, I know who they were.
Specifically, the bake shop.
Yeah, a couple of downtown business people.
They did.
Keep it open at that time, so.
But I think it makes sense to be on Highway thirty.
They thought the access of Highway thirty would be a big, big deal.
I think the drive.
With just being a block from scooters too, and scooters is busy.
Busy.
And they're going to increase their hours of the bake shop, they're going to be open on Mondays, currently they're not open on Mondays, and be open, I think, from seven to four, they're going to kind of play it by ear and see what the after work, if they will demand more of that.
Yeah.
We're not, but, so that, and then those changes will take place probably in, in May.
Good.
Very good.
So that's, that's really all I got.
Okay. Gene?
Basically, last week was not a big meeting week, but I did talk to Caitlin Bishop, because I'm concerned, as usual, with our mental health and what it's going to look like at the meeting with the advisory board, I think it was two weeks ago. You know, the question would be, well, if they don't keep the advisory or the advocates, will they even have to get unemployment from the counties and what our twenty-eight agreement looks like if they are, become unemployed because the state isn't going to use them? But I have Caitlin coming next week to kind of, they're going to be making that decision, they're hoping this week, to let them know if they're still going to have jobs or not, if they're going to keep them on, and nothing will change as far as we're concerned, which would be the best news ever, but she's going to come next week and give us an update.
Do they have to leave, why?
I'm not sure, those would be the questions then, that hopefully she can answer next week. I actually had Megan put her on our agenda for next week, so we can pick her brain and kind of get a feel for what mental health will look like in Crawford County after July first. I think it's important to know if we're going to go back to taking them to the emergency room in the hospital with no one to call. Can't imagine that, but we can't assume anything the way things have been running, so we'll get an update on that. But otherwise, as far as meetings, I don't think I had any that I can recall off the top of my head, but still working on, on getting the answers for what mental health they look like in Crawford County after July first. So if you have some questions, getting ready for Caitlin next week, and she's going to try to answer them for us.
Great, great, it's good to know.
Hi. All I really had was CDC, and there were just kind of updates. We're going to have another meeting, our development board or committee. I think it's, we're going to Friday morning. I got a CDC Central Iowa meeting Friday, so I told them, I said, well, I can skip going there, I can go over there virtually, and I could do this meeting too, but I'm trying to fit that in. Most of the stuff they're working on is, obviously, they're out trying to increase membership, and primarily, they're really going to work harder on the Latino businesses since there's quite a few Indian businesses anymore. Almost, well, fifty percent plus of our small industry business around Denefont is probably Latino. Of one variety, another, a lot of, you know, not, not, I don't know, my, my thought is especially, there's a lot of contractors that are, I mean, a lot of the Latino operation, or a lot of the contractor operations are becoming Latino, and they're, they do pretty darn good work, so I mean, I think getting them involved and stuff like that might be helpful for them, plus for the board, or for CDC, so. They're going to work in kind of barbecue, you know, barbecue site, I really wasn't sure what they were talking about. Website was finding out, because they're talking about a square, square space site, so I'm going to have to go over there and talk to them about that, I wasn't sure. They were wanting to do a little bit more, like interviewing, they got the, what do we call that room downstairs with you guys?
Incubator space.
Yeah, incubator, well, not the incubator, but that room.
Oh, podcast.
Podcast room.
Oh.
Like, sounded like they wanted to do something with that, where they were interviewing businesses on that, making podcasts, and that, did I understand that right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I, and I thought that's a great idea, you know, I mean, KDSN does something, you know, with the morning show where they try to highlight businesses throughout, but they also do, right, and so I think doing that with different other event type things, so I, I think that would help, and then hopefully create some popularity for the podcast, and then that room, more people want to use it, so, yeah.
Who would actually be the podcast person? Is that Paul and Mariah, or are they?
I would like to see Mariah do it, she's a lot, she's pretty bubbly.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Joe Rogan type.
Yeah, we're the Joe, he's going to come down once a week and do that for us, that's great.
But I think, I don't know, I, I think you kind of experiment with it, I don't know, I, I really didn't make any recommendations on that.
Somebody different, depending on the business.
I just, well, and I just think, you know, you try to, until you search and you find that one personality that just, I gotta go watch, I gotta go watch Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
See what the heck he's got to say this week, or something like that, you see what I'm getting at, I think, rotate that through the community till you find that one person that really.
Personality.
They're out there.
Something like that, like a Bob, Bob type personality.
That actually might be the perfect guy, you know, to get somebody like him in there.
I bet, he would love that.
That would be right up his alley.
Be right up his alley.
You know, he's got that, and he can keep a conversation moving, I, I, he probably would be fantastic, I'd prob, I think I might suggest.
Mornings with Bob.
Yeah, well, just a minute with Bob.
Not enough.
Well, Bob's minutes might be a little different than how you and I.
Country minute.
A country minute.
Yeah, the country minute with Bob, boy, there you go, I like that. Bob's country minute, yeah. Let's see. So, and they're trying to promote the Ignite Space, you know, they, for people that want to use that, that was one of the things they discussed. Let's see. Now, the rural housing assessment has been completed, are you in on that?
Yep, yep, got a Zoom meeting.
Is that today, or tomorrow?
On the twenty-third. Let me check, I think it's twenty-third, Zoom meeting.
There it is. Okay, because I saw Pam last night, and I thought she said today she had a three-hour housing meeting, or maybe it's a three-hour meeting for something else.
That, that could be, at noon she has the housing, and then we'd have the rural.
Oh, I see, gotcha, they're, they're two different things.
I don't mind it, let you know here.
Okay.
Charlie, when you take off to DC?
I go to DC, then February twenty-eighth, I fly out, and then it's the one, two, three, four, first four days of March. Yeah, so that's, like our ag committee, we've been, and I did have, I missed that, we were in another meeting. The ag committee has been setting up to all of our legislative priorities and how to present to who, who we're going to try to get to. Obviously, we're going to, most of the time, ag stuff's trying to work on the farm bill stuff, while we're still working on that, so. Most of that's. I mean, there's the big talk about, for Trump and his team on trying to, you know, more so actually from Johnson's perspective, trying to reduce the SNAP, because they're trying to find places to cut the budget. So then our job is kind of taken over to what, what's, what's our priorities in the farm bill? Do we want to make sure that don't disappear? And basically, across the whole country, they're echoing what you guys talk about when I ask you guys about the farm bill stuff, you know, I mean, the first-time farmer stuff and interest rates for, you know, loan, low-interest loans and stuff like that for the, for the first-time farmer stuff, and, and stuff like that just keeps kind of always popping back up, so those will be in the legislative priorities to keep that stuff in there. I've been doing a little investigating on my own, I was kind of wondering why NACO doesn't seem to have. I just heard that, you know, we don't have the firepower of Iowa pork, and I even got told that, well, you know, some of your other organizations that you belong to probably have more say. I got told that at this level and the national. And I thought, why would elected officials from every county in the damn country have a lot of say? I mean, you think they'd be interested in here, it's like Steve is, you know, let's get in there and discuss legislation and find out what's, how it's affecting us, so you'd think. And I just think it was, it's, there you go, that's, that's probably number one.
Contribution amount.
And, and number two, there, we're not as, you know, the ags, the ag focus, you know, in particular, is how I was kind of directing it, ours, there's the rural, it's that rural representation that's not there, and so hence, the, like, the legis, the, those that are in charge now don't know that our prior, that our, our priorities are necessarily aligned, so that's why I said we have to have more noise makers from the rural area to be able to talk. I think that might help, I mean, I don't know how you improve the money thing, because we're not, we can't donate.
Right.
But you still think that, you know, our constituents are the same as theirs, you would think that that. We've got to find a way around the money thing. I mean, I, no, obviously, money talks, there's no doubt about it, I don't know if you were watching the inauguration, any of the clips, I was watching when they were at the Capitol there, in the row right behind where Ivanka and Jared were sitting, there sits Elon. There was like, there was over a trillion dollars in about fourteen feet there. Holy crap, I mean, you just think about, yeah, there's a reason why money shows up and something, you know, but.
But you know, to that point in time, we see that in our state, just with the special interest in, like, overweight limit permit and.
Yeah, there you go.
And different things that.
Anyway, went down with all you and me, I just said, I don't know why you're even here, this is going to pass. Your efforts are futile, yes, we'll go.
You know, though.
Pretty much what you told us.
I still think that having the right voice out there, you know, it's just like some of the things that I've done at NACO, even when I brought to the attention of the rest of the body, you know, things that they hadn't thought about. So I think, I don't think you give up trying, Kyle, I think you did a good job.
You got to try.
Yeah, but I think that you also got to realize that there's a mountain standing in front of you, you don't have a downhill track, you know, I mean, so just, oh, that's, when we, when we went after this job, we had a mountain standing in front of us, you know, so you go out there and do it.
Just remember this, he will.
It's the grease, you're right. I had to give one extra.
It's still twenty-third and English.
Twenty-third and eleven.
Eleven.
So, Charlie, I was, I wish I would have paid better attention last night at my meeting with Wesco, but Clay Adams, I think, serves on the CDC board also.
Yep.
And it was brought up, I guess, like I said, I was reading on my computer and stuff, and they were just talking, I didn't think they were talking about anything important, but it was Broadway Dental evidently is making some changes to their insurance as to.
Accurate, yeah.
Starting April first.
Yep.
The way I understand it, and it's going to affect greatly the Delta Dental.
They won't take it anymore.
Right, and so.
They'll have to file your own claim.
Is that how it is? But they wanted you to pay cash at the dental office, and then what, you file your own claim, and so.
You get what you get.
As.
And don't throw a fit.
As the board last night with Wesco, they said, we're, we're not going to, and we have a hundred and ninety-two clients that are, and employees that all go there, that they're, we're not going to fund, give them money, cash, and then expect to get paid back from insurance, so they're looking to go to a different carrier, and, you know, in town, all you really got is thirty-two, and you, and he's a one-man shop, so could he take two hundred more clients? Certainly not, so it was brought up, I guess, that a CDC, that maybe they ought to be talking to all current employers that have Delta Dental and be kind of more.
Pretty much everybody.
More of a force to see if you can't persuade Broadway Dental to change their mind or change their.
Didn't we talk about that a little while back? Like CDC? Not CDC, but that Broadway Dental was switching.
I don't, I don't remember talking about that, but I, I guess it's happening, or.
Seems to me like we've talked about it in the past, and seems like this might be more of a nationwide movement.
I think, I think this is the way these employers, whether in whatever industry you're in, that, that have to deal with insurance companies or Medicare, Medicaid, I think, I think this is their way of going around, them telling them, oh, we're only going to pay you this, now you and I get stuck with the extra instead of them having to get paid less. That, to me, is what, does that, does that look like that's the logical course here?
They probably spend a lot of time, you know, their insurance gal probably has to have an assistant, so that's a whole department just dealing with insurance and, or no payback, really, they get what they get, they, you know, so, I bet.
Get what you get, you don't ever fit.
But instead of throwing a fit, you just say, we're just not going to do this anymore. It just doesn't work, it doesn't pan out, they're business, they have to make something in, by the time they pay staff all their wages and benefits, and they get nothing but the services that they provided, why, you just sort of do your own insurance and.
I wonder how many people quit going.
They'll probably be surprised. Unfortunately.
I guess if you revise your billing process, or, might be the same, I mean, because I'm sure some of that stuff's inflated just because they got to recoup the cost that they're losing dealing with insurance.
You're, you could very easily be right.
Are they going to reduce their costs?
I don't know, they might.
I don't know.
They might.
Doubt it.
So that can, ask them to think.
I know they're going to sell some kind of internal insurance or something.
They've always had that.
Have they? I don't know, I don't know.
And they get a discount on services.
Gone there a long time.
Then you get a discount if you pay at the time, you know, so.
Because Wesco even tried to get, I mean, they use Home Smoothie also, get them involved to talk to Broadway Dental, and they came back and said, they're not changing, they're not.
I think once, uh, once it's out in the public that this is what you're doing, it's probably too late to completely have a three sixty to change it. But I think, you know, see how that year goes and how many people just decide to find somebody that will take the insurance that I wouldn't want to put a percentage on how many people have dental, um, Delta Dental insurance.
And I don't know, like what Carol has for dental offices, I'm, I'm, would assume they would have more than one, but I don't know that.
Either. I, I just, you know, when we
Thirty-minute drive isn't that bad.
Say shop local, do things local, support local.
This one don't need a stamp.
I don't, what is it? I haven't had it yet to do that.
Um, it's hard to advocate for well.
Awesome, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
But we don't get to save.
What was it in the?
It's an approval.
Oh, okay, alright, okay. Should be good.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Once you're changing.
Yeah, that, yeah, right, that insurance thing is ever-changing. It just, it never stays.
It's not gonna get any better either with what's going on, uh, in California, um. You know, insurance companies are gonna have a hard time paying those bills out there. And that affects all of us.
On that note, insurance, do we have any scheduled meetings coming up with? Probably pretty soon.
Be great to get them in here, you know, them.
Hold downstairs right now.
Over there.
How do you go in yet today?
We would, uh, I'd like to ask them about our Naco, uh, Live Healthy prescription benefit. If they, they can tie that into prescription costs.
Oh.
You know, if we're able to have a savings, remember.
Do you?
Sure. Don't let me forget to ask those nerfies that when we meet with them.
Do you want me to remind you? Okay. I probably will.
Hey, something I was gonna bring up before we go to our statewide meeting. Maybe you've talked to her. Have you talked to Sandy Bubkey at your board meetings about? She is their zoning officer. That's what their title is over there in Manona County. Is that her full-time gig?
Um, she also does, I think, environmental health.
So like what Carrie does for us? Okay. I was just trying to figure out, since we're being strapped with this zoning dilemma, I just.
Yeah, and she's one of those positions that they combine different, a couple of different things.
Okay, maybe that's something else we gotta like that. I just, just a thought, I mean, obviously.
Same one. Remember, she reached out to me about the cryptocurrency ordinances and the wintermine ordinances.
Yeah, Kyle and I were talking about them too.
Speaking of zoning, if someone had an issue with zoning at this point in time, who do they go see? Or, or?
Seth.
Still go to Seth.
The acting, is the acting.
I believe he's still getting paid to do it, so. Which, yes, he will be up here at ten o'clock to discuss that.
Okay, so maybe, maybe he's got enough on a hold onto a job, the job as a assessor that he can do both now, but. I don't know, fingers, probably is a waste of time. But that's pretty much all I've got for this last week. I mean, I could go over a little bit more. Paul is so hard for me to hear on Zoom. He's a very soft speaker. I can hear everybody else real well. Mariah's just, she comes bilingering through, that's why. But he was talking about even having board members do the podcast. So I think maybe you know, basically, he might have been saying what I just said a little bit.
So we can have tea with Ty?
Oh, that's cute.
You're ill.
It's very catchy.
Yeah, no, I think that, uh, and then they, they discussed the tourism stuff, you know, but I don't, you know, Paul's gonna come.
Yeah, he'll be here at.
Yeah, so I don't need to get too much into CDC, because I think you could probably get some stuff out of him too, so. And that was the only thing that I had last week. Other, like I said, this week, we're gonna try to have we still want to work on, we're still wanting to work on industrial parks. I mean, there's things we're working on, you know. I mean, we gotta do some stuff to de, develop and, and you know, I, like I've talked about Manila this last week, I think, you know, other cities too, you know, Charter Oak started their own uh, local development association corp, you know, corporation. So hopefully, hopefully some of our small communities can, but gosh, everybody's got such a struggle. I mean, Charter Oak's been struggling with water and sewer again, as far as cost of fix, you know, I'm assuming the rest of them, you know, Deloitte's been, I think they're done with theirs now. I think they got all their new sewer stuff in at their Deloitte now, I think. That's what he said. You know, it's a continuous struggle to look after these little things, you know, I mean, there was, there's a lot of, you know, the new youth water tower, which is in our county, obviously, but I've been seeing that particular water tower, that type that looks exactly like that one popping up all over the country when I'm driving around. So I wonder if there was a grant out there or something.
Mostly funded by grant, same with soldiers.
And that's soldiers was too. So I mean, that's just kind of a thing, you, you know, obviously, whenever you put something new, you got your match, but gosh darn, you know. Water is something that we need to be, call California and ask them how important water is right now, I mean. You know, I mean, it's like with our reservoir, we're still working hard on that deal. In any event, that's development stuff for the, for the week. Some of it's through CDC and some of it isn't. Uh, that's all I got to do.
Well, I just got a few things. Like I said, I did talk to Representative Holt last night and, uh, actually on the way to the NCO. They're looking at more property tax legislation. He said that wasn't really in the governor's.
As far as the property tax?
Yeah.
Right.
But it sounds like the Senate and House are still discussing that. So I, I got those reports on him. He's very thankful for seeing those, um, from our recorder and treasurer. He's very much gonna try to be a part of our meetings at nine oh five to give us updates and feedback and that's greatly appreciated. Um, the other thing I did talk to some of the Carroll County supervisors at the NCO and we went to look over a twenty-eight E again with them for environmental health. Um, maybe makes a few tweaks to it. I was gonna bring this up to you guys. There's, it, it's we actually discussed at that NCO, these quasi-independent boards similar to CDC or Public Health or Conservation. So like, we share a twenty-eight E and it was discussed, we actually got to ask Kristy Harshbarger and Beth Manley, legal counsel there about that. And he said, you know, the twenty-eight E's between the two counties, but yet she's an employee that is underneath Carroll County Public Health. So we pay the bill, but yet they do the reviews, Carroll County Public Health, and it was kind of, um, not a perfect fit. Um, we talked about possibly maybe seeing what it would look like to revise our twenty-eight E so that the supervisors, the two counties would do a review at the same time that we sit down in the fall when we go over the numbers to make it equitable. Remember how we changed that? So that, I'm gonna talk Colin about that and seeing what his thoughts are on, or if we even have the ability to do that by Iowa code. So that's something to discuss. Just trying to make it more efficient and then transparent and how things are handled. Because like I said, it's just kind of a little bit gray where the two boards are funding it and approving the twenty-eight E, but yet it's in the plan and Public Health. It's.
It's under a different board all the time.
Another.
We've got a lot of that though. I mean, we're, we fund things and there's other boards between us and I mean, it helps in some ways, but other ways it's.
But it might be something as simple as changing that twenty-eight E where it has verbiage in there that when the counties meet to go over the yearly financials, we do a review at that time.
Do they currently do a review with her?
Yes.
They do.
Yeah.
Their county does.
Their county does. But even at that, we don't have input in that.
Though we are part of that.
And then as far as her raise would go, that would be Carroll County, that would decide that based on what other Carroll County employees are getting.
Well, they have, they had more, they've added more over the past couple of years. They've added more workload to her, which is I mean, you actually had a deal where she does, she put that her time's limited to be over in Crawford. You know, where you had that issue with the septic system.
Well, you did have a big issue.
So I mean, it, it, that's a great point that we're, we should be able to discuss those things. I mean, is she, is her workload? I mean, are, are they stretching her too darn thin and she ain't able to do her job?
It's one of those things that, and that's one of the benefits of going to those events is able to sit down and, hey, how's it working for you guys? And they asked me, how's it working for us? And just, well, maybe if we could tweak this or tweak that, we could have more transparency, but yet kind of fine-too, tune it to work better for both counties.
She has an assistant, doesn't she?
I'm pretty sure.
I think so.
I think so too.
I've never met her.
Never.
I think, I think, I think we did.
But I've never seen her either. You know, as far as, you know, public health, she comes to those, you know, once a month and gives us a report and then sits through the, our meetings with us and, um, you know, but, uh, could that be a Zoom meeting with just sending the stuff and then she would be able to get?
I think she uses that time to schedule things that she needs to do over here too, though.
But Colin's also gonna look into it, see what Iowa code says about. What is, you know, what it says about that.
In the end, it's still their employee. We're just paying for a service, right?
And we have to, that, have to have.
Yeah, yeah, we must have service, but.
So on that, more to come.
And it saves us a few bucks of having an official employee.
A good agreement that, you know, we don't have to have a full-time one, but yet it's our needs.
Yep.
Um, with that.
Most of the time, right?
Seems to, we got that issue resolved.
I'm just trying to read through this, but we have discussed it in the past in regard to Zoom meetings, if if that still requires, they can be anonymous on a Zoom meeting or not. When we discuss this in the past, and we should find out the legal.
Especially when we're doing a public hearing and whichever one needs to sign in.
Well, and to that point, yeah, what, what can we do? Because it's hard if they don't answer us.
You know, we should check into that. I, because I was thinking about it now. I don't know about normal, just everyday meetings because somebody could come sit in here that we don't know. I mean, you can ask them for their name, but I don't think they have. But if it's a public hearing that we have to, were required to record it, then I think we should be able to bump them.
I think we need to find that out.
If they can't tell you. I, I, I was wondering.
Trying to read up.
So we need to have Colin check on it?
If you, if you could, can, who would do that?
Probably Michelle.
Michelle, could you, would do that? We, uh, upon our request.
I mean, I'm not trying to kick anybody out, but I was trying to think, after that meeting that we had. Whoever user is, was here for that public hearing that day and we, they're entitled to.
Absolutely.
They're entitled to participate. I mean, that's fine.
Absolutely.
But when we go into a certain scenario, like a public, uh, open meeting or public meeting.
Everybody that's in the audience needs to sign in. We need to have the list of who was here. Um, I would think that we should probably just ask Colin to see how we can handle that, make sure that going forward this year.
Change the world, or the internet's changed how the world works. So I mean.
We're learning just as much as anybody else.
Yeah, as we go.
That's all I got. And we do have Paul here. So, Paul, if you'd like to join us. Thank you for coming this morning. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
I take up a lot of space.
He does. I have a little wall here.
I just wanted to come over and give an update, um, is what, what we're doing over in our office, basically. Uh, Tammy Long, if you, if you didn't know, is, is our new tourism coordinator. She replaced Drew. Uh, Drew worked through Barbecue Fest and he, uh, moved on to a different, uh, different profession. So, uh, left on good notes and, and we're we're, and we're happy with what Tammy's doing too. She's been a, a great fit for the that I, I wanted to bring her over and introduce her today, but, uh, we're short, short staffed today, so we didn't want to close the office. So I will bring her over and just introduce you sometime in the next few weeks. Um, some of the things, what she's doing for, uh, tourism. Uh, this time of year, we, we, uh, do a co-op ad in the Western Iowa Tourism. This, this is last year's. It's past, I didn't know if I'd ever shown that to you folks before. Um, and then that, that also was, you know, a lot of the, uh, parks in the county and those types of things. Um, we, we are, one of the things we're working on right now is we're, uh, possibly, uh, working on taking over the Hot Summer Nights, uh, event that, that happens here locally, um. The, uh, I'm looking at working with WIBIO on the Women in Business organization. Uh, they expressed some interest, but we're, we're hesitant and we expressed some interest and we were hesitant both, both because of, you know, it's gonna take some volunteers to do that and.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Um, but, uh, I think with both organizations involved, we're, we're close to being able to, uh, say that we're gonna be doing that, but.
It really started something though that's been very positive.
It has, and that's one of the reasons we want to continue. It's been a great reaction from, from people. And, uh, and, and be honest with you, we're like, and I, just because like every other organization, uh, like ours, we're, we're, we've got a tight budget right now and that would add to our budget a little bit, so. Uh, Barbecue Fest was a success this year. I don't remember, but I think I, I may have been here since the last bar, since Barbecue Fest. Okay. Yep, yeah, we made a little money, not, nothing huge, uh, probably just a few thousand dollars. We ended up in the positive. Um, had a couple of things on there, uh, this year that we hadn't have, because it was the tenth, tenth anniversary that we did, especially for that, so.
Has it become, I know it's always was the goal to be kind of self-supported. Has it hit that yet?
Not, not, I mean, we're, we're still, you know, we still get, uh, you know, money from tourism, tourism board here. And, you know, sponsorships cover a lot, but, uh.
But, and that's understandable, you know.
And we're, we're, you know, if we do, anything we have made in the past, uh, the past probably four years, we've been on the positive side. Um, we've taken that money and tried to buy things where we wouldn't have to rent it again. It was like last, this last year, we re, we bought some tents where we don't have to rent those in, you know, for years to come.
It's, it's always a process to eventually, I mean, you're, but you're gaining, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
And sponsorships are always gotta be part of the equation of.
I think if you count them in as your self-sustaining though, I mean, that, that's a big part of the expense is taken care of by sponsors.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, the first, I mean, thinking back, first few years, it was pretty rocky, I think, but.
And, uh, it was four years ago, they got a state, uh, grant and that kind of turned the table for them, uh, in that process, so.
It's expensive.
And, and monogram both.
Monogram is, both are very big.
The quality of entertainment that you had to bring to it. I mean, that's not cheap.
Yeah.
Well-received.
It is well-received.
So we've started that process again for this year. I always tell Jean, it was, it was profitable enough that we're gonna do it again this year.
Always have, gonna do it again.
If we could just get that green room coordinator to keep them in.
Keep the bands in line.
Oh, yeah. You got it.
Um, another thing, as far as tourism, um, I've said planning starting next year at Barbecue Fest, that's a pretty much a, a year-round uh, item to, to make sure that goes off. Uh, Mariah.
Started working on the vans already now?
I have, I've got one that I'm, the, the key one is, I'm having trouble getting back to me, but I'm, I'm gonna see him face to face this weekend, hopefully, so we'll get that, get that wrapped up. And then once that goes in, the, the other fill-in bands are a lot easier to, to make that happen. Or at least getting to a point where I can present it to, to our committee and our board to see who that is.
Yep.
Um, uh, Mariah and Drew went before Barbecue Fest, went to tourist, Western Iowa Tourism meeting in the year, and then, uh, we're going to, uh, the Iowa Tourism Conference here in March coming up. For that, and as far as the CDC side, uh, with the, uh, the Ignite incubator space, oh, I forgot to, I'll send these around here. Speaking of Western Iowa Tourism, uh, there's two, two pages, two, two things there. A one-pager and then a stapled part. So, uh, the state.
Oh, you put them all in there. Here we go.
Here we go. Alright, everybody.
Somebody got something else? I'm just trying to Bogart here.
The one with the staple there, it kind of tells the whole state. It's a lot of nice information about tourism in the state that uh, State of Iowa puts that together and then Western Iowa Tourism takes that, those numbers and makes, makes a, a county-wide one. That's the one pager there. Um, so, uh, basically just under eighteen million in tourism. For the county. And that, uh, and it's nice, for me, it was nice to see that we're back to pre-COVID numbers. It was exciting, you know. And this is a year, a year past, so this is actually twenty-three, not last year.
Oh, what do you think your main draw is? Crawford County is about parks, yellows much?
Well, I think.
And barbecue fest?
I think Barbecue Fest is a huge one. I mean, we're, we're drawing in, you know, uh, I think the numbers this, this year was twelve thousand people on Saturday and and five thousand on Friday night. Five to seven, I think it was, um, on there. So, you know, you put the numbers to individually to those, that adds up pretty quick. Uh, hotel motel, uh, uh, all of our hotel motels are, are, uh, pretty strong, I believe, in town here. They, uh, that's a lot of those numbers right there. So uh, that would be the main main ones as far as those those numbers, you know, tourism-wise, you know, uh, I know, uh, the Celestica event, uh, right around barbecue time is huge, you know, they, and Manila has some nice events for tourism.
Practical, for sure. That's a good one.
They put a lot of work into that.
Yeah, it pays off, though. It's a great time.
And then, you know, uh, it it's always brought up, uh, um, Donna Reed is is a potential there, I think, and they've got a new a new gal that's involved there.
Is that bus crew still stopping?
Uh, yeah, you know, it's, uh, five, three, three to five times a year involved. Yep, so, so and they stay over in in here. So that's big for, that's the key for the for the tourism dollars is to have them stay here in Denison on here. So, but we are, we are at the county, you know, as far as the hotels, it's kind of a hub right on Highway thirty there for, it's a nice place for people to stay on when they're traveling. I think it was, uh, three million dollars of that was, uh, hotel motel, if I remember.
Hey, you know something that I I I meant to even bring it up at our meeting this last week. I was thinking of this one. I was going down the road here a couple of weeks ago. We know we do a lot to try to develop housing, business recruitment. But, uh, you know, we don't ever talk about restaurant recruitment. I mean, we've got some good restaurants in town. But there's, we're 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 missing certain elements. And when I was down in Texas, is when I was thinking about this, I was down by Amarillo and I thought, you know, there's a barbecue joint every, on every street corner in Texas, and we can't get one in town. And, you know, barbecue, I was trying to think, you know, our Hispanic communities actually altered our palate in Denison. Because, you know, I mean, I can't go to a Taco Bell anymore. I mean, that's, that's misnamed. I'm sorry. You know, so now that I eat real tacos, I don't, that that's that's a little bit harder to stop at, mind you, but, uh, maybe we should in- investigate within our community. What type of restaurants should we recruit? Because I was thinking, you know, like Jethro's is, well, they got a little place downtown there now, down by the event center. You know, but barbecue is something that both aspects of our community, whether it's the Hispanic community, I mean, they tend to enjoy their food types better, but they also like barbecue. So maybe that's the kind of thing, you know, to give some diversity of restaurant and community, so there are more people, or you see what I'm getting at? That's that was my thought. I mean, I'm obviously just thinking of other ways to develop the communities, you know, I mean.
Especially those small towns, the restaurant is a big part of the community. I mean, Celestica went without one for a while, I know, and that that.
And it is packed, uh, when I go to Celestica often.
Is it? Good, that's good to hear.
Yep.
So it's good to have those things. I mean, just different. I mean, I don't think you'd get a Jethro's to come into Celestica or Manila, but I mean, to Denison. But our small town, you know, it's always nice that, I mean, you can get the good steakhouse or something, you know, that.
And there's some niches.
You know, like over in Vail with Tiny's and stuff.
People will travel for good food and good service. They they, you know, will travel.
You bet they. Anyway, that was just a thought I had, you know, to write that down in your notes. Maybe that's something we have to look into, is maybe recruiting the right type of.
And we have some nice facilities available, too.
Yeah, well, that was what I was thinking, was the empty ones that night up on on Broadway.
Colin, have you heard that they're getting a KTIV, uh, camera?
I did, yeah. And I actually, uh, talked to the gentleman that's a salesman for the city, was a salesman or at my previous job, so I know him pretty well, and he he put a little bug in my ear a few months ago. That'll be a nice addition. It really will.
Supposed to get ahold of them this week. They want to set up the time to start setting stuff up, so I'm not up there with them, but they can go and have their.
Jean's the one that's up on the roof.
Did you hear me try to butt in there at the end? So I told, I let Mariah know that.
Yeah, yeah, and we, and she put that out in the, in the email, so.
Everybody's gonna supposedly contact Jean, is what I told them.
It's okay. I didn't sell books. All right.
On the CDC side, the the incubator space, uh, Ignite is now up and running and we're promoting that this year. Uh, podcast room is available. I don't know if we've talked about that before.
I brought that up.
Good, good. Thank you. And we'd love to have some of you on there, uh, in the future talking about that. We're, uh, we'll, we will have a podcast of our own, um, that will be called Crawford County Connect.
Are you the interviewer then? Are you the?
To start with, probably a.
Podcast master?
Yeah, I don't know if I go that far, but. Uh, I've done a little bit of that.
We actually were talking about this very subject. Maybe we should try to recruit Bobby Vodker as our host.
There you go, yeah.
You know what? That's riding the wheel, huh? So so just just think about that.
I was actually thinking to have him on, too, so.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, the, uh, I think that'll be, I think, to me, it's a great way to get the message out of what's going on and not only, you know, in city government, county government, you know, towns around the area, what's hap, what events are going on, those types of things.
People listen to podcasts when they're driving, when they're, you know.
And we've had a great response from younger, the younger crowd that that said, they said, oh, really? Yeah, so.
Been proven they listen to that.
Um, we'll be pre, uh, present, we'll be attending a chamber boot camp and, uh, and then also professional, professional developers of Iowa here this, uh, next month. Uh, meetings and Western Iowa Advantage, we do that, that's, uh, and if you're not familiar with that, it's a group of, uh, developers from seven different counties that meet over at Region Twelve uh, once a month, and we kind of share ideas and have speakers in and and kind of just an education side. It's been great for me as a, as a fairly new uh, economic developer. I've learned a lot from that group.
And that.
Part of, part of that group also is Community Adventure Network. That's a company out of Minneapolis that, uh, uh, kind of matches companies that are looking for a new home or an expansion home with communities that are, that are uh, have have land available and those types of things. So, uh, and we get, uh, I've been able to attend one of those. I'll be going to the next one in, uh, May, I believe it is. Um, but, uh, we always have reports through Western Iowa Advantage of somebody who has went and kind of get those, and we get reports from them, too, on companies that are looking for that. So, uh, we have our leadership program going full, full force now. We're about a little over halfway through that. It's been real, a real positive, uh, program. Uh, we had one for ninety-nine percent sure we'll be doing that again next year. It'll be a annual thing.
The businesses that sponsored the people that are in it are, what's their, have you got any feedback from them yet?
Not from them yet, no, but for.
That'd be interesting, Seth. They think that was beneficial.
And I've been in those before where I I could see people that worked, that I worked with that went through it. Boy, I mean, some of them changed night and day.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering, was seeing the change in that first.
Gets them out of their shell, maybe. I guess the best way is just trying to, yeah. Um, I would like to, uh, I know it's budget time of year. I would like to ask for support for next year also, when you're, when you're considering that. I'll, I brought the the letters over. I was passing those out, so you each have one. Um, thank you for your support in the past, and that's kind of all I have unless you have, uh, questions.
Also, how's your member recruitment going? And are you still conducting member interviews?
Uh, doing that, not not as much as I should, to be honest with you, but, uh, we do go out and kind of actually, uh, January, February is gonna be, uh, we're gonna do a membership drive, um, that we're just trying to, I know we, um, Tammy is gonna be involved with that, too. With, uh, with everybody in the office to be part of that. And I know Tammy went out last week, even, and uh, we've, we've kind of put together all of our packet that has, you know, Spanish and and English versions of what we need, but the information we need to get out to people and just starting that process right now to really, um, go full swing of that.
So, you know, I get asked that every time, like, ask my colleagues, for example, why should I be a member? And what what do I get out of it? And you don't, I don't get on my own advertising and that, so, I mean, those are the questions that.
You bet, those are, and and that's part of the reason we we kind of been dragging our feet a little bit. We went to a, we're going to a tiered dues program the next, the next year, instead of, you know, a- as you go type of thing. Um, so that the the list will be, here's, here's the the membership that you chose. There's like five different choices and different payment levels. Here's the list of exactly what you get from that. So that's kind of why we did that and and put that together. Other, other chambers, quote-unquote chambers, I guess, are doing that now. Uh, you know, are, one of the things unique about ours is that not, not, not a lot of, some, there are some, but not a lot of chambers are combined with the economic development and they're separate, so they're getting really, uh, two things for, two for one type of deal there, because they're, you know, there are, the more people, more businesses recruit that we recruit, the more people we recruit to the communities, you know, the more, the better off all the businesses are gonna be.
I think having networking events or membership then, you know, like with the golf tournament, it should be about, I mean, that was what Iowa was about originally. That was a valid question. That the membership got to network then, you know, I mean, and you, you know, I think that's, that's a big plus. I mean, any, any conference we go to, anything we go to, it's the networking. That's one of the most valuable tools that that is there. And I think creating a one Crawford, uh, one Crawford County team thing, I think that's imperative to keep working and building that. You know, how does that benefit Aspen Wall? Well, if Crawford's growing, obviously, that's gonna create more need from all of our business, you know? So that's the first thing. And so if you're a solid, stable business, and I mean, Aspen Wall Co-op is solid, we've gotten it down here, not any other. So I mean, if they're able to contribute to the overall growth of the community through CDC by having them poised at the table, in fact, I think that's your answer, Dave. You see what I'm getting at?
They're just gonna be asking.
You know, and that's a legitimate question, but sometimes you get, you get out of something what you put into something. And I think that's one of the things we always got to remind people, you know? If you're an active participant in life, life will treat you pretty good. But if you let it happen to you, most of the time, it's gonna be on the fifty percent side of the other side of it that worse, kicking you in the back rather than pulling you along.
And we are open to suggestions on that type of thing. We've tried, you know, some, some coffees and some, uh, business after five type of things and just the response ever since, as as a, in, as an industry, I think, ever since COVID, that those types of things have been down and just getting that that back to where people attend on a regular basis. I mean, people are just busy, you know? And I, we certainly understand.
The change society.
It really did. Yeah, it really did.
Say, Paul, where does, can the public get that Western Iowa visitor guide that you pass around that we're advertising in? How how does someone get?
They, they have, we have them at the office there, and then they have a distribution of about twenty thousand throughout the Western Iowa.
So they, uh, so if you were, I guess, I'm just thinking, if you were from Montana and you told your wife, hey, let's go to Western Iowa this year and see what's happening, where would they find that book? Would they have to, you know, how would they get it to know what they want to go see in Western Iowa?
They would, they're, you know, through the Western Iowa Tourism, uh, site would be one, and then if they could request it from us would be another. Uh, they're in all the visitor, uh, visitor centers.
Okay.
In Western Iowa.
Okay. And then I just had a question on the handout that you had, is when it has the spending, that little bot where it says spending and economic impact, then it has Crawford County, and then it says direct and total. What does that mean?
That is explained actually in the other, in the other section on about the second page.
Oh, in the.
In the other, yeah, in that one. Yep. If you flip over, it talks about how, you know, direct is people that are in the tourism industry, uh, that are working there, and then people, the other, the the next step would show that it was, uh, people that benefited from that, you know?
And the labor income means direct and total, I guess, what does that mean? I know that's been millions of dollars, so it's four million roughly in six months.
People directly working.
Directly working in the tourism industry.
Motel, uh, and then the the site of that, where he, somebody comes to town, stays in that hotel, goes to breakfast. Restaurant price still be in, but they get gas, that type of thing, you know, those.
That's the total.
Gotcha. Okay.
And there's the.
I'll read, I'll read through the directions.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
And then there's, you know, and when you really are bigger than, it's, it's the dollars that, let's just say a restaurant has a boom because of Tri-City. Okay, well, now they got extra money they spend at Reynolds. So I mean, there's actually, they have, actually have their.
Formula.
Formula where they figure out how all those dollars keep reinvesting again in the community. When somebody, especially from a big event like Tri-City, where you got a lot of people that don't necessarily reside here, that are just coming here for that special event. So that's new tech taxes, that's new tourism dollars, you know, versus then it kind of rebuilds itself. And it's, it's the same thing with what your paycheck brings from a farm at Smithville, you know, I mean. You got the direct payment to the person, but then all the other total spending that they do in the community. So that's kind of how I think, in that, but you describe that where you get it.
I think I, you, your question reminded me of one thing I wanted to bring up, too, is, uh, the, uh, Denison Housing Commission, I I work on that. Um, and we had a really good meeting, this last meeting, just a real, the first real one since I've started with them, that's been really positive, people interested in building, uh, some multi, multifamily units and some uh, single-family homes. And we are in the process right now uh, of a different group going through the rural housing readiness assessment, uh, through Iowa State, and that's something, um, because of timing, we did it just through Denison, but I think that's something that we, I'd like to pitch to all the communities in in the county next year, and and might be some where the, uh, county supervisors could possibly help with that if, if, um, if you're willing. It's a, uh, it's a real nice process to tell you, gives you the data behind where you are, then maybe what the next step should be for where where you should go, you know, should it be senior housing? Should it be workforce housing? Should it be low-income housing, those types of things? And it kind of gives you a path to go down. So it's, it's been real, but we have a meeting actually this week that's kind of kind of put all that, bring the data and put it to how we should, how we should use that.
You know, I I I actually have been looking at these little sites that pop up about senior housing. You know, a lot of our farmers eventually move to town and the kids take over the farm and they either build a new house or buy a house. And then we get old enough to where even mom doesn't want to have a garden anymore, and they get the mini houses and stuff, which tiny houses, whatever you want to call it for a nickname, but they build little communities of them, you know? I I mean, do we, do we investigate that stuff, too?
That's actually one of the ideas that I was pursuing when I first started here. Um, I have a person in the, in the county that's interested in that also, and I, I think, oh, I don't know if I will think that that, I see, is that something that work, you know? And can we, are there people interested in the community in something like that?
I mean, they probably don't find developers would want to build it, but then you'd need some infrastructure. So I mean, if there's grant for, out there for the cities.
And I, I've, I've, I've talked to the state on that. I mean, they, I I had asked them early on and said, you know, uh, is that something that's been done before? They said, no, but we'd love to take a look at something.
Okay, all right. So you are working good.
Different ideas. Some of our agenda, let's.
Right. Very nice update. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in, Paul.
See ya. Appreciate it.
Seth, you're up next.
Morning.
Morning, Seth.
Stop zoning.
Get in the zone.
And they're not out of though.
So.
Do what do you like? Um.
We had some concerns about our last meeting. I understood you listened to our, our meeting and you had some concerns.
Well, so uh, I did some research on how many assessors offices actually do zoning, and it's very, very minimal.
Do they have a majority that that does, the zoning?
Well, I asked in our district, um, looks like the majority had a zoning office. I don't know.
Based on a poll.
Details of that. I I don't know details. I have the county's names that do it. Um, engineer was a second. Um, sanitarium, and then like sanitarium and E nine-one-one was zoning. And then EMA and E nine-one-one with zoning. And one county had no zoning. And the two counties that actually have zoning in our district, uh, one resigned effective December of twenty twenty-four, and the other one's resignation is from March first of twenty-five. Hi, if you guys want to.
If you drop it over in your first stack and all, explore.
Yeah, I don't think we're interested in that.
So these are the offices that you called, you know?
These are in our district. So then I actually have a survey list of the county that um, Appinose County was yes. At the time, Carol was no, but the newly appointed assessor was the zoning admin prior to being appointed assessor around a year ago. Um, Emmett, but their resignation's in. Lyon, their resignation in, and then Shelby.
Is it?
About ten counties that didn't respond, but.
Zoning just takes up so much time, or what, what is the issue that after all these years of zoning, being in the assessor's office, does, is it not a good fit for Crawford County?
Well, I mean, I'm new to a position. I would think you could respect that. I want to focus my time on learning the assessor's office rather than adding more to my plate. And I just wanna focus on.
You've had this for a year.
And I told you guys back in May that I did not want it, and I'm still doing it. I feel like I was doing you guys a favor, but. But now I feel like I'm attacked for not wanting to do it.
I don't think nobody's.
No, we just feel like it's a good fit.
We're trying to figure out what to do.
We, what we want to do is not make it that somebody walks into the courthouse and wants to get their zoning. And we tell them they have to call Carol or they have to go someplace else. So we're really trying to keep it in our courthouse, which is where it belongs. Um, and we just, what, what we need is what exactly, you know, is the steps to your zoning and what makes it so complicated? How do we have somebody else do it when we don't, do we have a job description for what the zoning does? And that could be a fault of the county, you know, but. Makes it kind of hard to get somebody else interested in doing it when we can't pinpoint how many we had last year, how long it takes, you know, and, and, uh. So I don't know, we need to come up with a job description. Could you get us a job description of what it really entails? How many you did last year, uh, the average time that it takes, uh, something so that we can decide where this needs to go.
Does Sarah have interest?
I did talk it over with my staff and unfortunately no, we just feel like we won't be able to do what our daily tasks already if we ask something like this.
Without knowing exactly what it entails too, yeah, so.
Your staff, you didn't talk it over with them?
I asked them and nobody, I mean, specifically said yes, they left it up to me. I mean, two of them are like within a year and are still have tasks they need to learn.
What tasks are they learning? I mean.
Assessor office tasks, like some of my old job duties I'm trying to pass on to them to train them how to do. As I picked up new duties, but I'm also trying to learn how to do.
Can you name one that you still learn how to do? What exactly, when you applied for the job, was a surprise to you that you had to do that you didn't do as chief deputy?
There's quite a few things that, I mean, Dwayne just handled that I didn't know. And I mean, all the emails that you get as well to part of the job, uh. Um, the equalization. What the state beginning in compliance, I mean, Dwayne handled most of that and I'm.
You weren't aware of that when you applied for the job?
Well, I knew, but I didn't know all the details of it. Uh, land use, I was trained very minimal on prior to.
What would it take to work out a solution within your office to have? Your staff tackle this?
I would strongly prefer not, so we can focus on our four forty one assessor duties.
Just a question, Seth, I'm not trying to tag, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. How many, how many nights have you, you and your staff stayed late tackling a zoning issue? In the past year since you've taken it over. And I'm just trying to.
Maybe a few, just on emails I receive.
Just trying to wrap my grasp around it. It just don't.
It is hard for us.
I don't, I don't know, because I'm just trying to, to me. I mean, outside looking in, it just don't. To me, it don't seem like a huge issue, but maybe I'm way out, way outside of this deal. I, to me, it seems like it'd almost be a, a benefit to you to have it in your office. Cause it would help with the assessors part of it, cause you know what's going on.
List of counties in Iowa and there aren't many that do it.
I'm trying to figure out, I just, if somebody comes in and wants, you know, zoning, then the assessor already knows there's something going on there.
So the city of Denison has their own zoning, uh, we ask them for permits and they provide us with permits every year. That would certainly be the same thing you would ask and they would just send us permit.
Your zoning stuff isn't anything to do with any of the communities unless they're unincorporated.
Correct.
So like where you see a lot of county, when I'm driving down the highway, I'll see a lot of time you'll drive, it's a, you know, county that doesn't have zoning. Rural zoning, which would be outside of city limits. So basically, all Dwayne ever handled was the outside of city limit zoning, correct?
Correct, no.
Okay, that's kind of helping, but I've wrapped my mind around it a little bit there.
Oh, we reached out to that city of Denison in twenty eighty.
It's a thought, it's a thought. I can call Jessica.
No, I don't should. Seth, did it sound like there's very?
Yep, just the, be a disservice to our taxpayers, they come to the courthouse and then they get sent to this. Well, I guess.
It's.
It's hard to make, you can't make it a full-time position, obviously. There is nothing to do.
I, I just, I, I mean, it's been in your office for a long time. People, the, the citizens know that if they need zoning, they just go to the assessor. So I would like to keep it there. I, I just had to be beneficial to your staff that they could. Um, get the extra finances that we pay to provide that service.
Yep.
Has there ever been anybody, I guess, kept track of how many hours specifically you spend just in for zoning or has that been done in the past?
I'm not.
Track just to see how many hours a week or hours a year.
I don't know if Dwayne did or not. I haven't seen anything.
In the year you've been doing it, approximately how many zoning applications have you had to deal with? Just, I know it's a, and you can look it up and maybe get back to us, just so we have a solid number. So even when I walk into the city.
We have no idea.
You have no idea? You have no idea? You just don't want to.
We have no idea where you're going, that's.
I mean, I feel my plate is full with assessor's office stuff. Um, House file seven eighteen's been a big change. And put us behind from the beginning.
When you, on that note, when do you feel like you will be caught up and running at full speed and if you're still learning? I mean, do you feel like you're gaining? Do you feel like?
Yeah, I feel like, I haven't been through the whole two-year cycle. Um, or you do a reevaluation year every odd, odd number of year. I haven't been through it all yet. To see everything, but I feel yes, that I'm learning and getting done what needs to be done. But I would like to lighten the plate up with having not have to worry about this at all and just stay focused on learning what I was hired to do.
Any other further questions?
I guess not.
Oh, I guess I, I'd like to maybe, I'll talk to Colin though, to see this zoning administrator. Is that something that we as the board just appoint a person to do that? We just appoint it? So it could be someone that maybe doesn't want the job, but we just appoint them to do it? Or is it something that we hire and, you know, elect someone, so to speak, versus appointing? I'd like to know is the exact difference of what the, what the Iowa code says.
Yeah, good, good question to ask.
Yep.
Colin.
I'd like to really know how often we, or how we approach with zoning issues.
Oh, I know.
Right.
Well, when I talked to him the first time, he kind of threw out maybe.
Daily or?
No, I, it's, you know, sometimes, some take a little bit longer, some take five minutes, you know, if it's a property that they have to go out and inspect personally. It takes a little bit longer, but most of it they can get on, you know.
Chance that it had to be rezoned for something, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that kind of.
Then they're going to take probably quite a length of.
Well, here's my thing, you know, and I, I, I respect your point that people like to be able to come to the courthouse and find that person. But you know what, the advent of the internet.
Yep.
Were all pretty easy to reach with an email. And so if you did do something coordination with the, the city per se or whoever. I mean, as long as that person can be contacted and we get their response and the information they need to carry out their mission. It, in a timely manner. That's the only thing I worry about. If you're with another county, their priorities are always going to be the other county. So if we'd work a deal where us and Denison per se, or, you know, I'm just using that as an example. We're working together. You know, you can say, alright, you're, you're, you're not meeting them in this courthouse, but email here and then you can meet them. I don't see where that would be the biggest challenge, so to speak.
One question. So if another department in the courthouse did it.
Yep.
Uh, one type of transportation would be provided. I mean, the assessor has a vehicle, so that's easy.
Right, yeah.
Do you want their vehicle?
Yep, I can have their vehicle that's paid by assessor dollars.
You could use the supervisor.
Use supervisor's vehicle, I'm going to have or pay my lunch, but.
Pay my lunch.
Yep.
On those times. You know, once again.
And I agree with you. It's not, it's not ideal.
I'm not fond of it, you know.
I don't want to do that.
Well, no, I'm just using that as an example.
No, I know, but it was brought up prior to you, but yeah, no.
We had talked to Kenny Call way back, you know, and he was, but I also, his hours would be sporadic and, uh. He's got the steps you need to go on. It just.
You know, here's, here's the, here's the thing is we're trying to keep it economical as well, because you can't hire one person to do this job.
No.
No, then we can't put it on EMA, it's new at that.
Well, I don't know that it's. I mean, you brought up the point, it fits in his wheelhouse, so that's why that makes sense.
Endeavor.
Us anyway. I get that he's learning a new job, but.
It's a good excuse for the assessor. It might be a good excuse for EMA. Sorry.
I mean, that's more of a, more of an excuse for EMA.
Yes, he's really old in the department. He's new and so is the department, well.
EMA guy still went behind the ears and my uncle would have said, you're.
At least I'll use that.
And it wasn't new that zoning was thrown off, so they, he got the job with the zoning being there for a number of years.
It's lighter.
You know, I wonder though, I don't know, maybe we. The engineers wouldn't be bad, the engineer's office.
But they're also going to be new.
Well, that's all kind of reorganizing, realigning too, and so.
Exactly, everywhere we put, we do that right now.
But they're out in the county, you know what.
They are.
Which would be a fit.
That would be a Benny for sure, that they're already out there, or at least one of them primarily is out there. But.
Well, back to.
Say the competence, how's this? The competence level would be in, would be available within the engineer's office. I mean, they would be able to do it.
Right.
And there's, that, that wouldn't be a skill set beyond their ability. You know, they're busy too.
They're busy.
Welcome to the courthouse. I think everybody's supposed to be busy.
Well, if I can go back to one of my first years on Board of Supervisors, Cuman said, what are you going to do? They're under three percent.
Cuman always had.
You know? Well, do.
Do you want me to reach out to the city of Denison? It sounds like.
Let's, let's, if anything, maybe we'll have a conversation with Ben. You know.
With who?
Ben.
Yeah, Ben and Tim.
Ben and Tim.
Ben and Tim and maybe.
Maybe it's a. You don't want to assign it to a person, you assign it to a department. Maybe that's how you do it.
Well, I did talk to Amy how they could break that out and, you know, uh, the payroll part of it. Uh, when, when Sarah was thinking about it, just to see how that would work and it would work, it would assign it to. Put down your time sheet, uh, zoning things you did and, you know, but we're going to have to think outside the box, it sounds like.
We could discuss it next week with, um, if Paul comes up and we can bring Ben and Tim up.
We'll just discuss it with every department that comes in.
Well, we got a number of them here.
That's what you think, right?
Two, three, four. Anybody want to raise their hand?
Taking volunteers?
You guys are out in the public.
Yeah, five thousand extra dollars. Okey dokey, going once, going twice.
Um, let's see, Colin, on way back, um, Colin, we'll be here in three minutes. Before we get started on our next agenda, I know with compensation board recommendations, um, Kyle came, um, in code. A procedural thing with budget sessions and I, we need Colin to clarify before we get started. Um, whether or not we can make an actual decision today or if we have to just have consensus because. And Colin, did you see that one Kyle brought up?
Yep.
I'll go three thirty one point nine oh seven, number two. I don't, I was just reading through what, trying to figure out how this all transpires for today. Not that we, I plan on doing anything differently, but it would seem like we do so many things consecutively. And then as of late, we find out that we've never been doing them right. So I just wanted to read through this and it. Here again, we might be have done doing them wrong all these years, because it's section two, so it's half the public hearing held on the county. The budget as provided, the county compensation boards shall submit their recommended compensation schedule.
Which to me is a little bit backward because you got to have those numbers to be able to put it into their budget.
So we.
But I, I'm wondering, and what Colin's going to clarify is maybe we make a consensus, consensus decision today. Could have to formalize it at that public hearing.
Public hearing.
That's all I, he's going to.
I mean, I get how they want some numbers for.
They're going to have numbers for budget purposes, but I mean, you can't come in.
What's this other section now, three thirty one point four three four?
That's the whole, I do the finalize the budget, the, the publication of the budget part. Are you, the ten, the twenties, I published the public hearing for the budget. So I mean, you got to have. You know, follow this section in three thirty one point four three four on the public hearing.
Kind of late.
Yeah, yeah.
Late in the game. That's what we said, it doesn't make sense for trying to.
You got the cart in front of the horse. I know you're trying to get the horse back in front of the.
So do we have a, a specific public hearing that's simply for that earlier on?
We did have, had come to our, our meeting.
Yep.
And present.
Okay, which wasn't quote unquote a public hearing, but it was public information. The, the game for the board, public meeting.
But then again, if you read that, it just says that it'll be presented at.
Budget.
The budget.
Budget hearing.
Which I, that's why.
That's just why I said, you know, you look at some of the things that were in there when I was reading through it. How seven eighteen you can change where some of the ways that are gotten in that particular code probably need to be revamped. I wonder how much of that was something from way back that didn't get updated one other time. I, you know what I'm getting at?
Well, they updated it. I mean, it's bad, maybe.
When?
Well.
This says Wednesday, November's twenty, twenty twenty four on the box.
Yeah, when they changed the.
So when they redid the compensation board.
But you.
I got, I don't.
Keep things, I really don't want clarification here. Colin just walked by, he'll be here in a second. We still have to be conscious of our timeline, of our mailers, of our department heads and getting their budgets together.
Yep. We do need to. And get the process moving.
Oh, we would need to.
Yeah, nice work.
No, I did, honestly, those are my intentions.
Yeah, you did a lot of, uh, lot of.
Perfect timing, Colin.
Sorry, everyone. Welcome to our late start and for the kids and my wife's car wouldn't start, so. I had to go.
Couldn't even get the garage door still.
It's.
It's that kind of way, yeah.
So we kind of talked a little bit about.
Yeah.
What Kyle brought up or saw in code and.
So I have print, because that's how I live. Um, I have a question for Terry before we get going, but hopefully she knows how to specify. So this was brought to my attention this morning from Dave via Kyle. Um, on the timing of the boards here, yep. The board's acting on any recommendation by the compensation board and what's, when does that happen? Uh, so as we know, Ted came last week, I believe, right? And presented the compensation board's findings, uh, to the board. But then there's this code section, we'll start with. Um, three thirty one nine oh seven subsection two. And it says, at the public hearing held on the county budget as provided in three thirty one, four thirty four. Which is the other printout I gave you. The county compensation board shall submit its recommended compensation schedule for the next fiscal year to the board of supervisors for inclusion in the county budget. The board of supervisors shall review the recommended compensation schedule for the elected county officers and determine the final compensation schedule. Okay, so then we go to the other code section that talks about, um. Which is the public hearing on the county budget subsection three. Following and not until the requirements of twenty four point two A are completed, the board shall set. A time and place for a public hearing on the budget before the final certification date. And published, and shall publish notice of the hearing, not less than ten, not more than twenty days prior to the hearing in the county newspaper. And so that kind of gives us an outline of the timing. And Terry, that question is for you about, you sent. about, you sent out this twenty-four two-way notice, right? Um, not later than March fifteenth, the auditor using information compiled and calculated by the department, sends out to all the property owners, kind of.
Right.
So.
And that's to, um, I believe that is specifically the general fund and the rural fund are what noted, are what are, sorry, what's, what is noted in that.
And when are you scheduled to do that?
Um, same timeframe, the cities and schools, I believe, have to have their information to the county, um, March fifth, and then no later than March fifteenth, the county will, um,
And notice.
Send notice, and, uh, postcard, well, it's not a postcard, it's a mailer, yeah.
So then, once Terry has that completed, then we go to subsection three of the three thirty-one, four thirty-four. So following, and not until, the requirements of twenty-four point two A are completed, at that time, the board shall set time and place for a public hearing on the county budget for final certification. And then it is that, that public hearing, the public hearing held on the county budget, according to four thirty-four, that the county compensation board submits its recommendations to you guys. So I understand, historically, the county has done it in a more chronological order, the compensation board meets, they make, they vote on what they're gonna recommend to the board, and then the compensation board chair comes here, as Ted did, and presents his findings for your consideration, and then you take that into account, and you set, um, well, a hearing like today, on that, on the board's decision, on the compensation board's recommendation. And we do that, or rather, you guys do that, in order to kind of help the, the rest of us out, because you, we are set next week to present our budgets to you guys, and have you guys decide what the county budgets will be for each respective department. And I think, well, I don't think, I don't, just they told me, you guys have this hearing today in order to help us, the department heads, plug in that number to present to you guys next week. And so it's chronologically, kind of, everything fits nice and neat, and it makes a ton of sense.
Yep.
It does.
But, yeah.
But then we read the, the Iowa code, and it kind of says, the timing's a bit different, so.
Common sense out there.
So there's nothing that says you guys can't discuss, but as far as incorporating it, incorporating a final number for the department heads in the final budget, it seems like the Iowa code outlines a slightly different schedule.
So could we discuss it today and come up with consensus of where we can give those numbers back to the department heads to follow into their budget?
Uh, I, I think it would be fine to discuss it without taking action, um, to give an idea of what department heads should submit, should kind of finalize for their respective budgets about where their own salary will be. Um, it would come with the caveat that the board would always reserve the right to change that decision, because no decisions were made today, it's just discuss action. But it could give guidance to the department heads to what numbers to use when they are gonna come sit in that, in front of you guys.
Next week, Monday, dude.
Yeah. So that would be always not a final decision, subject to change.
But according to this code, then we would have to bring Ted back in on that meeting. We gave him a, a number for.
It kinda says.
It kinda says that.
It kinda says that, doesn't it, yeah.
He said, I'm sorry, I stumbled across this.
You should be.
But, but it's, it's so backwards to me though, Colin, because even though we can, let's say we discuss it today and come up with an idea where we wanna be.
Yes.
And we still have to have him come back in and give the, the recommendations.
It could be abbreviated, he could come in, uh, just to satisfy the code.
Code just says submit, it doesn't say you have to be in person.
Yeah, that's true, he could, he could.
It just says, the code just says that they must submit, doesn't say they have to be here in person to submit it.
I agree with that, Craig.
Right. The internet.
He can send me.
Something in your folder that you.
Suppose their intent here is to create transparency for the public, since it's at the public hearing.
I suppose.
Yeah, and if you look at, I think that is exactly why they do it.
Work, I mean, 'cause, let's face it, I mean, the common sense, this still should reign supreme here, so that we can actually do our jobs and not have a complete confusion within a, because we'll be here all, that will just, that part of the meeting will last all day.
Yeah, it kinda rushes things at the last minute, but if you look at subsection four of four thirty-four, it says, at the hearing, a resident or taxpayer of the county may present to the board objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the budget, so I think this delay uh, or timing aspect outlined in the code is exactly for, for transparency, for the citizen taxpayer to come in, um, give them notice and time.
Yeah.
Yes, although, I would argue that the way you guys do it would give them more time and more notice, rather than coming last minute at the public hearing for final certification and have that number sprung on them on the spot, but.
Right, and my concern is that the, in the new compensation legislation, you know, that some of that's changed, and allows this board to, to make changes individually, ups and downs.
Yep.
Um.
But you, and you looked at that, what Kyle's got there, it even says going down, sorry.
Let her finish. At that budget hearing in March, the only direction you can take the budget is down.
Yeah, correct, that's what I was.
It will not allow for an increase in the county's budget once it's been published.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
So that, I mean.
I, that's why I said, it don't look like it's updated to where their new rules are.
And that's not uncommon, for parts of the code to lag behind other parts when things change, uh, they try as best they can to, you know, if they make a change here, how's it gonna affect other things, and maybe change that too, but it, it sometimes just.
Stuff don't get changed till supervisors like me find.
Stop reading the damn code, yeah, there you go.
Wait a minute, you're just too long to read the code here.
You need to get out, do some farming.
I think that what we need to do, and I'll preface this by saying this isn't political, this is, the chief executive actually did make a mandate that we need to start using common sense in government, so maybe we should call Des Moines and let them know.
Are we.
I think we should still go ahead and have discussion in regards to this.
Get that out there, yep.
Put, put what research and thoughts we have out on tape.
Let people digest it, think about it, um.
I think we could come up with numbers today that they can plug into their budget.
But let me ask.
I mean, I think, I think you guys are making a, a good faith effort to follow the timing and scheduling in the code, there's nothing, I mean, you, at your discretion.
They gotta have guidance.
You, you can, you can offer guidance, um, but again, it comes with the caveat that, except for, you know, what Terry outlined, you know, once we submit the budget for publication, kind of.
Written in stone.
Yeah, what's written in stone is the amounts, um, allowable, and the general fund, the rural fund, those funds, the fun part is what's etched in stone, it's not, not our line item budgets that are etched in stone, it's, and it's the function numbers that create the budget, which you all don't need to know about, I mean, you do, but you don't.
Yeah.
It's not part of what you do, it's part of what we do in the auditor's office.
I hear ya. So if we discuss these numbers today, what Kyle has done, an excellent job of getting some things all put together, highs and lows, the Olympic average, as we call it, um, which gives us a really good starting point for conversation, uh, I think we've all done some research with other counties, kind of what their staffs are, there's different elements that go into all of this, uh, but I think that, uh, and then next week, when we do the full budget, we'll kind of know how those numbers all play out, now we've still got some time to to work with those, and so, I think we're on the right path, let's just, uh, have a discussion.
Well, I'd rather have you come in and do exactly what you did today, so that we are on the right path, than do what we have in the past, thinking we were right, and then find out that, what.
Yeah.
I mean, a little bit of all, I stumbled across, and we just moved on, but.
Yeah, well, thanks for bringing to my attention, I, um, so, so you guys came to me, I didn't.
Well, and thank you for dropping everything this morning and working on it.
Yeah, very good.
Luckily, school was two hours late, so you had some time down. Everything worked out the way it's supposed to, it worked good.
Thank you, Colin.
Yep.
We're still on schedule.
With that, let's move into discussion about the comp board writers. Kyle, you know, we talked, and you compiled.
Yeah, I mean.
So let's.
This is my. One, like.
Which are they?
I compiled, and I, I gave you guys a copy of a compilation of everything, but uh, I, I believe what my, it follows the comp, compensation board's recommendation, but, uh, it, it takes the four other factors that I felt would help develop a fair raise in recommendation. As everybody knows, the comp board recommended a three, thirty-four hundred dollar salary increase for supervisor, then a seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend, seven thousand dollar year raise for the auditor, recorder and treasurer, eight thousand dollar year raise for the attorney, and a fifteen thousand dollar year salary increase for the sheriff. Well, and then, uh, just kind of go through this, I'm not gonna read probably all this, but, uh, my research developed off into four other areas, based off of county population, total salary spent by the counties for elected officials, poverty level of the county, and total assessed value of the county, which Crawford County ranks forty-seventh by population, fifty-ninth by salary, unfortunately, ninety-sixth by poverty, and forty-sixth by assessed value, and I, which I put in a spreadsheet of all four categories, and computed a, an Olympic average of those, and, uh, they don't complicate it out, and this is just what the averages were, I'm not, no, no emotions into it, which said the Board of Supervisors should get a roughly just a sixty-eight hundred dollar raise, the auditor fifty-nine hundred dollar raise, and Colin, when I was picking on him, but he said he was seven thousand six hundred dollars overpaid, the recorder forty-four hundred dollars raise, sheriff twelve thousand dollar raise, and the treasurer forty-eight hundred dollar raise, respectively, which would add a roughly a hundred and twenty-eight dollars, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to the budget, assuming the attorney wouldn't get a raise, or his staff, and that's the elected officials and their deputies, if everybody's kept the same uh, percentage raise to their deputies, so. So I thought, well, is that, is that affordable with taxpayers, and I, well, if we were to ratify that, and pass that on to the rest of the employees of the county, if, in estimate, if we took that hundred and twenty-eight thousand and divided it by the twenty-three employees, that, uh, that it was affecting, that came up to about fifty-five hundred and eighty dollars per person, and I and I'm just using a hundred and fifty employees total. Uh, so I took that times a hundred and twenty-seven, and that equals about seven hundred and eight thousand dollars, just trying to be fair, I'm just using numbers, just all numbers, uh. And the comp board says we gotta be fair, because it's right in the code, it says we gotta compare it to other counties, so.
That isn't the code.
Right, it's in the code, uh, well, we should be fair to ourselves first, as well, uh, and, you know, seven hundred and eight thousand, eh, we can't afford that. When we have roughly five hundred and two thousand in new tax dollars, if that's if we max levy everything, according to the papers that Dave presented to me.
Terry got me those, that's, that's moving, because we were under three percent growth, so we can move to three fifty on general base, taking three ninety-five on rural to capture those dollars.
Yep, so that showed me that that probably is not gonna work, uh, so I took that Olympic average and I cut that all in half, and to shorten that up, uh, it adds about forty-nine thousand in new spending over the twenty-three employees, and that's if the Board of Supervisors took zero, zero dollars raise, but gave the chairperson a two thousand dollar stipend instead of a seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend, because, and to be honest, to me, that seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend either need to be gotten rid of, or that just kind of, it's outdated and antiquated, or get rid of the stipend altogether, uh. And that, if I did all the same math, would give about everybody in the county an average of two thousand and seventy-nine dollar raise, which is about a dollar an hour, if we, everybody, all hundred and fifty employees got a, a raise, imagine, which is two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, which is probably, probably alright, and, uh, so, well, maybe that's doable, I don't uh, let's just throw another number out there, give everybody a thirty-five hundred dollar raise, keep it even. And that would add like fifty-eight thousand dollars of new spending, and gives everybody, would give Sam Deal, hundred and twenty-seven employees, about twenty-five hundred dollars raise, which is three hundred and sixteen thousand. I, so I looked at all that, and I thought, you know what? My recommendation, taking all emotion out of it, is just based off three things. The hard averages of this. One law is the back to blue law, and affordability, and this is just a recommendation that not, I, I know we're probably gonna end up changing it, my recommendation would be, the Board of Supervisors take a zero dollar raise and a two thousand dollar year stipend for the board chair, the auditor gets two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, the recorder two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, the treasurer two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars, the attorney, being he got a, was showing a zero, I felt that he still deserved a raise, and got, the lowest of all these numbers was two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the sheriff receives six thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollar raise. This, no, please don't take any of this for, nothing more than pure average of all these numbers, and be fair, it really, was really close to if you were to cut the comp board's recommendations in half, it wasn't too far off, so, they weren't. These averages weren't far off of what they were, other than when the averages came back, other than the second fours, your numbers were obviously skewed a little bit, because my numbers didn't rep Crawford County's, uh, maybe different, where you guys get paid the same versus a lot of the other counties, they're all over the board, that's where the averages changed, so. That's where I'm at.
Any others, any thoughts, anybody? Have you done a lot of?
Yeah, I've done a lot, uh, not the research I did over the last week pertains more to the entire, uh, offices, and there's a disparity, some places where populations the same as ours have less employees than each office, and, uh, part-time, not everybody's a deputy, things like that, so I'll, uh, reserve those comments for the next week, uh, and kind of fill that in, because right now, today, we're focusing on elected officials, and we need to just stay focused on that.
Correct. Ready?
I guess I'll back up and just say that, um, one thing to me, that the compensation board does not take into consideration, and maybe if we use them in the future, moving forward, we could direct them to look at this a little more, but how much, um, it certainly can be stated, if you look at, from just, uh, what they do, from the uh, population of the county, to the average salary, that our department heads are underpaid, just given that, um, statistic. But what they fail to see is how much that affects the whole department's increase in salaries when everybody is tied to that department headed by a percentage. And so, to me, the only way that you could get the department head to the salary you want, and without it really affecting the whole department, is you'd need to get rid of people's salaries that are tied by a percent level to that department head, that if you could just get all the employees, let's just say, whatever your salary was this year, that's your, that's what, um, it's no longer tied to a percent, because, I mean, Iowa code just says that they can't be paid over eighty-five percent, that doesn't mean you just stick them at eighty-five percent and they stay there, I mean, we can easily do the math every year, if they are above that eighty-five percent or below that eighty-five percent. So I mean, I would say if you, even if they stayed at deputy status or whatever, but if you're at a salary, that way at least, um, you could increase those salaries if you wanted to by a percentage amount, um, or a flat dollar amount, um, but it wouldn't be tied all the time to the department headed, easier, and certainly cheaper for us just to get that department head um, to the level that the compensation board thinks they need to be, without affecting the whole uh, of each department, like it really does, if we base everybody's increase in pay.
Uh of each department like it really does, if we base everybody's increase in pay based on that percentage.
I hear ya.
And I don't know, I guess I don't know how you get there, I mean, I've I've certainly seen. And we've got, I guess I've got Colin here, we got uh code three thirty one point three two three states that the board, meaning us. May establish the number of deputies, assistants and clerks for offices of auditor, treasurer, recorder, sheriff. And county attorney, so it seems like we have that authority if we wanted to tell you, here's how many you got. Here's what their title are and here's how they're paid.
Yeah, Craig, to that point, uh Dave asked me to look into that uh a week or two ago. And three thirty one on a three section one says exactly like you said, the board, uh subject to board approval. Uh and had their determination, the number of deputies, assistants and clerks for each office will be determined by the board. And adopted by resolution.
And noted in the minutes. Memorized.
Well, I'm gonna start out by reading something out of the Iowa, out of the Gazette. Did some research like Craig, like Craig, but. Uh Iowa's property tax crisis, that was the title, that's what grabbed my attention. Iowa needs bold reforms that address the spending side of the equation. Levy limits such as maximum of a two percent increase per year must be imposed without loopholes and exemptions. More importantly, local government spending should reflect the success approach taken at the state level under Reynolds. This ensures taxpayers are not continually continually squeezed to fund bloated budgets. Now, before I continue reading, I think a lot of this would be looking at a Polk County per se. Because I will tell you, we uh since Gene and I have been on and Greg. I think we inherited a thrifty board, just use that, maybe stingy board, maybe just tight, I don't know. But that we were behind other counties. Uh I'm I'm, I I still to this day try to find the relevance of that, other than. Somebody created some fictitious thing out there in the world where we're forced to be responsible by our own means. But still subject to other people's determination of what their means are, this, am I making sense there? I know I sometimes sound cryptic, cause it's working good up here, I mean. Why are we holding ourselves to someone else's idea of what's the right spending expenditure? We should be looking at what's what's right in Crawford County, now, the taxpayer is always gonna think their taxes are too high, I'm one of them, okay? Uh the people that that are the employees of the taxpayer are always gonna think that they need a better salary. But we also gotta look at what's the average going on in Crawford County, what's going on here? The rise of property taxes represents a fundamental failure to adhere to sound economic principles. If you were running a county. And there's people in this room that run businesses, so I mean, this this is where we're at. Taxes taxes should not outpace the private sector that funds them. The government spending should reflect taxpayers' ability to pay. High property taxes discourage investment, suppress economic growth. And impose recurring financial burden on property owners that functions as an unrealized capital gains tax. Iowa must prioritize spending limitations, notice it didn't say putting limits on something. It said practice limitations, that's that's us practicing discipline is basically what that said. And then transparency and rate reductions to address this crisis. And I don't, you know, we're hearing it from the state house all the time, that's why they're trying to manage our our monies. From the state level, cause they're hearing it from taxpayers all over the state, that property taxes are too high. And and once again, I'm a property taxpayer that won't argue that. But uh one of the reasons I took ran for this job, alright? Aligning local government practices with the principles championed by Governor Reynolds, and this isn't trying to hurrah for her, but. They they've been trying to get this under control, at the state level will ensure. That property ownership is a source of stability and pride, not financial anxiety. What what I was looking at there is, I was thinking, alright, now if I retire. Like saying in four years I retire and my son takes over the truck line or buys it out, you know, and if I don't use that money. Can I afford to stay where I'm at? I mean, the cost, the standard of living that I've grown accustomed to, would I be able to do that? And the answer is no, if I didn't have my truck line's money, no, that's that's I do, but my point is is. I wouldn't be able to maintain that as because of property taxes almost cheaply. Because of what they were costing, so I mean, that's something that you gotta think about, obviously, the wife's not gonna be able to take care of that big yard anymore anyway, but. That's besides the point, uh tax and spendings are two sides of the same coin. If Iowa local governments continue the current trajectory, taxpayers will remain trapped in a cycle of rising property taxes. It's time for local leaders to follow Governor Reynolds Reynolds example and embrace fiscal discipline to create a fairer. More prosperous future for all Iowans. At a time, and this is from me, this isn't from the article, at a time where property taxes have grown exponentially due to valuation. That ain't got anything to do with us, that's actually got to do with you people, well, not you, yeah, you too, but. People, you know, the improvement of housing or the lack of housing, but then the improvement that we do our own houses. Or the new industry that come, I mean, we can say that we want new businesses and we do. But them building a new structure, it's gonna raise everybody's property taxes. But it should raise our raise our cost of living, so I mean, all that stuff's supposed to work in hand. The governor's put a lot of thought into it, and I shouldn't say just her, but the staff's up there put a lot of thought into this, in any event, uh. Have seen a large expense and and increase in spending of taxing authorities, the school systems have 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 again increased. I mean, let's look at what's been going on in Crawford County, that's where I'm going with this. And we're we're building a new school, necessary, probably, otherwise they probably wouldn't have did it. Uh and then we're building on the hospital again, oh, these are both things that are gonna hit the property taxes. You know, I already have to some degree, cause I'm sure they were putting money aside, I hope they were putting money aside already, but these are things that are gonna increase it. So I don't know that we we've we've got this, you know, just like uh. We're going along in the same thing, you know, that we've been doing it so wrong for so long that everybody thinks now it's right, alright? And the way we do this, I mean, okay, the ta, uh the cost of living went up three point two percent, so at at my point. And this is, this is where my mindset is today as we speak, unless somebody can change it, three point two is our limit, now. That's that's what the cost of everything going up is, you know, I mean, we've been given raises every year since I've got on this board, except for to us. But we've been given raises to people every year, um and. Dollar, two dollars an hour, you know, whatever the case may be, we've been doing that every year since I got on this board. I think we've been pretty disciplined for the most part, but we still do uh out there, the people that are paying the taxes, theirs hasn't been. Um in fact, you know, when we talk about a dollar, they're talking about a quarter. At some point, we gotta take that into consideration here, I mean, everybody talked about everything here, Kyle, excellent presentation. That's why I always say you're one of our most valued budgeters, okay? I mean, you you really, you really put a lot of thought in and I appreciate that, but it's it's the similar thought that we've always had. And sometimes I think we gotta look back, I mean, there are departments. And and I'll just come out and say it, I, you know, we we've, people that we haven't encouraged forward as much as we should have with others. I mean, I think our deputy deputies, our law enforcement deputies, I I would like to actually really consider them more. So that's why when we're considering what we're paying our elected officials, you can't just rule that out, I mean, say, okay, we're just looking at elected officials today. Because we got the deputy tie in on the second floor, you have to look at what everybody's gonna get paid to the overall budget. But then we can't not look at what we're gonna pay them while we're considering what we're gonna pay Roger. I mean, I I get the back the blue thing, I understand what the state was doing, Steve and I have had long talks about this. To the point where we both wanna probably grab each other by the throat, but you know, it's because of the lack of guidance there. We still don't know what their goal really was, e- even they can't tell you. So I mean, that probably needs better guidance before we keep pushing that out. But we do need to consider the guys that go out there and have the potential to be shot at every day, I mean, obviously, this isn't Afghanistan, this isn't Afghanistan or Ukraine. So it isn't that drastic, but they are still the people that, do we need to think about that? Yes, please.
To that point, I and I had a very, very good conversation with Representative Holt last night, kinda helped me. Finalize some of the numbers in my head where I kinda came up with, but he did say, he did say, Dave, I. I know we've talked to all you board members about the back to blue, he's, but it is law. He said, it might be law that.
It's poorly written?
Really written.
To where you don't know where to go with it?
Um but he said it is law and it does have comparables and and wherever you get to that, but he said, yeah, he goes, I. I know I'm not, I'm paraphrasing our conversation, but he goes. You still have to take into consideration comparables and you still have to try to. In essence of that law, respect him. He said to come in and do a zero or a cost of living, he said, that's not law. But he said, I get it, you gotta watch your budget too, so. And that's coming directly from our representative Holt, who was behind that bill.
And he's just kinda saying, look, we know we put you guys in a tough spot, and whatever you decide, you're either gonna be breaking the law, you're gonna have the public. Against you, against what your decision is, but you're you're stuck in that, not me.
And he said, I wish you guys the best, but yeah, essentially. And that was, that was last night, my conversation, I didn't know.
And trust me, we've had conversations.
He circles back to that all the time, that's why I want to grab him by the throat. But the uh, I I I, you know, for me, and and I'm not trying to minimize anybody's importance in the whole building. But I just, you know, we've taken it in steps where we've helped, you know, whether it was secondary roads or whatever, I mean. And 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 my only priority is actually in my mind right now is the deputies. But uh and and I'm not leaving out their boss, but if he's got a new job, he got a big pay raise to begin with. So I I mean, I just looking at it as a year, I mean, what we gotta figure out, we only get, what's our number, five hundred and what to spend?
Five hundred, five oh two, I think.
Five oh two.
New tax dollar.
If we take the max.
Uh uh if we take the max, and and why are, why do we always push ourselves to the max right? Why can't we say, okay, this might be the good year to to. Problem, uh and when I bring up Cola, that's way down from what it had been up in the nines and the sixes and the sevens and. You know, now we're down to three point two, so maybe it's a year to be a little more responsible with that max profit or that max tax asking. But we still get people that, you know, I think we need to make sure we're addressing, at least from my perspective. I mean, when I went through here and figured, I I started figuring out, Colin, nobody's picking on you, we appreciate everything you're doing here. But you're you've you've even acknowledged it, just like has been already brought up, that you're paid pretty well for our size accounting. And on on the comparative spec scale, which, once again, here we are comparing, I hate it, but here we are. So even at one and a half percent on his salary, it would still give him a nineteen forty six for a raise for the year. Uh that's just starting at a number, I take one and a half for an arbitrary number to start, but you go just to two and a half. That puts him a thirty two, uh you know, thirty two thou, thirty two hundred and forty two dollars for for a raise, which. You know, pretty good rate, better than a buck an hour, uh for normal hours, I we we understand Colin that you probably. Were much more than forty hours a week, uh. And I and I figured it up at every level, you know, whether it's the auditor's office, you know. But once again, the second floors, you always gotta make sure you're remembering these deputies that are coming along, cause they're all getting a raise then with that, I mean. That percentage of rate. Go with Dave.
How about, and Kyle, you computed your numbers and gave us your recommendations of where you think everybody should fall into. Get get us to a a point where we can give our department heads and like officials something to move forward with with their budgets. You wanna list off your numbers, you have numbers for, and we'll go around and see where all that.
Yeah, I I I can. Uh I I actually uh wanted to go.
Or unless you want me to start, I mean.
Yeah, go ahead.
Cool, I wasn't far off from Kyle in this kinda, last night after talking to Representative Holt. The supervisor deal with the two thousand, I know when I told you about that, I I I wasn't really in favor of that, especially that. But no, I I I don't, I I'd rather see it passed on to everybody or.
Can I ask a question about that? Does anybody know when that seven fifty started? I mean, cause it seems to me like it must be ancient, cause seven fifty didn't even pay for the gas for the extra on the night.
I during my tenure, I believe it split from five hundred to seven fifty. And we can, we have a little bit of history on some of that, we can look back on that, but.
At least as long as I've been on, probably.
Yeah, there's always been a stipend.
What I had jotted down, like.
Okay, that was a question.
What I had jotted down was a thousand and a thou, thousand dollar stipend, thousand dollar pay increase.
You're talking supervisor on this one, right?
Okay, thanks, um after talking to. Oh, Representative Holt last night, I put sheriff at seven thousand, and these are just round numbers, he was, can tweak them. I put the auditor, recorder, treasurer at three thousand, county attorney at twenty five hundred.
I Kyle's numbers are so well thought out, so well presented.
They're not far off.
They're not far off and and really truly in the scheme of things, everybody's pretty close. I would possibly go with what Kyle has out there, because it it really has some some teeth in it. Uh some great thought processes and uh pretty close to what you came up with, not really that far off.
Back of me, you ready?
Rolls around really fast.
I mean, we just gotta deliberate and come to agreement.
Well, I for. I like the nineteen fifty, and I'm just giving you round numbers here, since we're all going numbers, nineteen fifty for Colin is what I was liking. And when I actually was trying to evaluate, I don't know that I'm qualified to say that Sherry's job is more important than Sarah's. I'm not more important, but more in depth, more deep, more to do. It's got two departments, there's a lot going on, there's a lot to manage there. Um Terry's got a lot to deal with, especially on an election year, there's a lot going on there, she's also takes a lot more heat than a lot of the other offices. Inside this building, because it's her job to watch everybody, at least on the fiscal perspective. But uh, so I mean. Keeping them all kinda on the same wavelength or same level doesn't. I don't know, without doing, sitting down and having them explain to us why Terry needed more or where why Sherry needed more, you know, you see what I'm getting at?
We've had that a number of years, I mean, yes, there's very, very two key roles in what we do, very different. I mean, even the money that Sherry handles and investments she's done, you look at how well our our elections have gone. I mean, if it wasn't for our budgetary restraints, they, everybody here deserves a lot more. But that's what we're discussing, is trying to live within our means. And it's it's tough to break them apart, because they do such different things that are very valuable.
I mean, they've all been paid the same for a long time. I mean, here in nineteen seventy eight, the auditor, treasurer, recorder. Were all paid thirteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents, so they were all paid the same amount. You know, what, forty seven years ago? So they've stuck on that same. Trajectory, I guess, if you wanna say, yeah, for a long time.
Okay, so so going with that, I I my number for the third, the second floor. Elected officials would have been twenty two fifty, and this is what I came up with already, and then the sheriff. I mean, I'm I'm trying to tussle with keeping, moving forward on the back to blue, which. Not to the degree that you are, mind you, but but thirty one fifty was my number for the sheriff himself, and and I'll tell you why in a minute. Okay, cause I also, I did something different for the deputies, and I actually thought, you know. This isn't elected official, but I was trying to do this because he's got, other than secondary roads, which is already settled, he's got the largest force. Of the elected officials, you know, cause the jailers, I I I got wrote down the number seven. he's got the largest force of the elected officials, you know, cause the jailers, I, 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 I got wrote down a number of seven, seven, uh, fifteen sixty for a raise for them for, for the year. But I was looking through yours, Roger, your deputies are, it looks like a, what do you call where the heartbeat's going on? They're different rates for everybody and it was even the same. I wasn't sure which jailers were full time and are, are, are most of them part-time and you have just a few full-time?
Those four are full-time, okay, the rest are part-time.
Okay, so I was trying to figure them out too, you know? And so like I went with the, considering the full-time jail, jailers, fifty-six, fifteen sixty. And then the secretaries, we gave them a pretty good raise last year, so I thought I wanted to go at least. And this one was one of them that was negotiable, cause I can't figure out, is Susie fixing to retire? Well, that would put more workload over on.
That was the original plan. I know when Jim presented that he is retiring Amy, Suzie was like going to stay another year or so.
Okay.
Um, she does not have an end date right now.
Okay, see, so that was why I, I, I kind of went with them. I thought, you know what? Uh, I, I can, I could use my number of fifty cents because there's two of them. If it was just going to be Amy giving her a dollar increase then, you know, putting her at the twenty, you know, the twenty, basically two twenty thou- two thousand eighty dollars for an increase, it would have been. But since there's still two of them, I thought, well, you know, do fifty cents and see where that lines in the budget. And then I really wanted to consider something on the, on the deputies. And, you know, like your chief deputy and your lieutenants, are you paying them a percentage of what you get?
So the chief deputy is eighty-five percent.
Yeah, of what you get, right, okay.
So then the lieutenant, um, would be a percentage, I think it's like eighty.
Eighty-four, yeah.
Yeah, I think eighty-four I seen on Todd. And then is there two of them that are kind of managing with there?
Right now, there's just one actually for retirement.
Oh, okay, that's why I was missing another eighty, so, okay. All right. So we got to make sure we keep that in mind, cause I'm sure you're going to have to replace that person. Uh, but then I thought, I was thinking fifty-five hundred for the, for the, what do we call line deputies? I'm not trying to insult you, I mean, the guys that go out and do the, the work, you know, and they're out patrolling and doing that. So then I thought like a fifty-five hundred dollar, that was my number that I came up with and I was going through all that. So they probably got the biggest catch-up this year, but to me it was due. So that's kind of where I'm sitting, you know, and ob- obviously my numbers are negotiable to some degree, but I, I, I'm extending when I, or at least in my mind I am, so.
What'd you think for supervisors?
Oh yeah, I didn't even think about us, to be honest. What did you say, one thousand and a thousand? I like that number, that's good. Yeah, I didn't even think about us. Just worried about feeding the troops before I did.
Well, I guess I didn't. Uh, I'm happy with either your number, uh, Kyle's number, Ty's number.
Somewhere in the middle.
Right, that's fine. I just didn't know, I guess, Ty, when you were mentioning about, I mean, as the board, we don't set the deputies' salary or the, uh, jailers as far as a raise. I mean, that's in the budget that Roger presents to us.
We kind of do though, don't we?
So we're working out with you. I mean, right, I mean.
Working out, yeah, but.
Isn't that true that we, we just set the department heads' dollar amount salary? And then I guess if we as the board said, hey, Roger, we want you to, if you bring us a raise on your deputies, you know, by a certain amount, just let you know the board is going to approve that this year type of thing. I think that's how it would work. But so any, any one of the, the numbers that's up here, I, I'm good with that. I'm good.
Yeah, go ahead. Excellent, so I can get an average up.
Well, my thing is, was like, and especially where I said, I'd like to give the deputies, I mean, I, I know the back blue was talking about the sheriff himself or herself, whatever, found you or anything.
Not realizing.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I mean, do you forget the rest of the blue? Are you doing that? I mean.
I don't know if they're paid on a percent.
On a percent, you would.
Well, then you want.
Yeah.
And that's in the, when we get into budget session too, as well as looking at each department head of where their staff is, where they're at, what their needs are. Are they able to, you know, maintain that staff because we're fair? And that's all what will happen next week, once that we get our budgets.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do all this, I'm trying to wrap my, what, how we've done budgets in the past, you know? I mean, we don't have the union that we do negotiating stuff with, it's different now. I mean, so are we still going to be, where we work with him to get the right salary for them? How are we doing that? I mean, that's all important to where we're figuring out what we're going to pay these guys. Like if everybody, if they're going to be working off a percentage, it's correct.
But that brings us back to last year, how come it took us so long? Because if you look at that bottom line and then you try to figure out how we can keep that bottom line, which is what we are approving. And if it's up here at the top with wages and they're insisting on, on giving bigger raises than what we had in mind, and then it comes back that, well, you're not even giving us enough money to do our jobs because, uh, wages and then the other things that go into this, there's so many things that we don't have any control over. If you're a fuel, your insurance, your cost of doing business. Uh, if we're top-heavy on wages and we don't have it in our budget to do the services that we are hired to do, there's an imbalance there. We really have to figure out how to balance that and still be respectful to our taxpayers on how, how we're budgeting. Uh, so it's not as easy as, all we have to worry about is the wages. There is a whole lot of line items underneath wages that, uh, have to be fulfilled. And there's just so much money that we can do it if we use it all for wages, we don't have money to put in our.
No.
You're all right.
Now, when you figured to five hundred thousand in new monies, right?
It's knowledge you got from the department management.
Right here.
Is that what you got, Dave?
That's what, yeah, Terry gave us here.
If they're right here.
So if that's new, is that new for wages or new for the entire county? So that's important, what Gina said. You can't just throw all that into wages. It won't help the buy.
Yeah.
Others.
That's just total, that's new money.
And that's unfortunate because we have unknowns out there. And if we just say, well, this is a good year to get wages out, will we be able to provide the services that we hire our folks to do if we put it all in wages and we don't have the money to do what we need to take care of our people?
Well, that's why I kind of did what the mindset that I did of breaking down, okay, this is a good year to catch up to this specific group instead of everybody, you know, I mean, that, that was, that was why I was thinking the way I was, you know? I mean, I don't think that we, with the way seven eighteen was crafted, I don't know that we're ever going to have a great year to give everybody a big bonus. And, you know, it's sad that, uh, some of these counties are already, uh, got all these huge wages, but they're actually paying the piper now.
There's counties that are going bankrupt. We had that last year at Isaac.
There's, there's counties out there that are talking about coming together. Two counties coming together, you know, I mean.
There's some things I think we'll have to.
Throw in dirt to the wall, but.
Going forward as far as House file seven eighteen, thinking outside the box. I mean, you look at the investments that we've been able to capitalize on that. Sherry brought in some of the fee changes, uh, are going to bring in additional money. We need to continue to bring those forward to our representatives. Um, Sarah's report was great. I mean, working with the representatives saying, hey, we're, we're doing it, this at a cost of our property taxes, meanwhile, we're having to really put, uh, tight belt on our, all of our department heads, elected officials, while we're doing your work.
The services we provide.
So.
That we're here.
Those are things I think moving forward to that, you know, we got to look at tapping into so that we can pay fairly.
Yeah, I agree.
This is also, uh, twenty twenty-five, in which they sent the House file, uh, Homestead sixty-five is going to hit because those, uh, folks, we have a lot of folks in Crawford County that are over age sixty-five and they are no longer paying their full taxes. And that was set out there, uh, talked to Jason years ago and that came, he said, gonna have to learn how to budget. They're, they're just not going to be sending a half million dollars to anymore, cause we're trying to, we listen to our elderly people while they're moving out of Iowa. It's because they can't afford the property tax, we lowered it for them, we listened to them. Now, you guys have to learn how to budget around that. So we can't forget about that little file that's coming in to hit us here in twenty twenty.
Get pissed off.
Yeah, yes, yes, but it's okay.
My friend.
Forget over it. So those are all things that we have to take into consideration. And until we see the final budgets for everybody, these numbers are just numbers that we're plugging in to see how that's going to fit in the whole overall budget. So it's good we had this conversation and got kind of a number out there to plug in.
Well.
We didn't know yet.
Well, we're getting closer, we're getting closer, we are getting closer, we are getting closer.
We in favor of using Kyle's numbers? I mean, I'm in favor of that.
A little high.
You're not with an average?
He's coming up with an average.
Everybody's numbers.
Yep.
Okay.
That's, that's what you do, Kyle, and we appreciate that you have your calculator.
That's what we do with that, it's consensus, consensus, it's an average or anything, right?
Average. That being said, you know, uh, I was reading through Kyle's notes here and there's something. Kind of find ourselves in a lot of.
I was just going to say, Gina, and I think everyone needs to remember that. I mean, the, the property taxes are not just the county debt, you know? The city and the schools that, uh, for a lot of people, though, that's the majority of the tax bill, it's not the county.
And that's what we said.
And so, and we've got West Ham, we take community college, you've got the hospital, you've got, there's a lot of entities that make up the property tax. And sometimes it just gets frustrating when the state says it's our prerogative to lower property tax. And then you ask the state, how much revenue does a state get from property tax? Well, we get none. We get ours from sales tax and, you know, other things, income tax. That's where we get our income, but we're going to make you, we're hearing it from our constituents, uh, to lower property tax. And to me, the response from the state should be, talk to your schools, talk to your counties, talk to your cities, put pressure on them to lower taxes. That's where it should be, instead of them dictating us, telling us, you know, maybe you're in a county where, uh, the citizens say, you know what? I don't think my taxes, I like the services that my county and city and school provide and I'm happy with my taxes. I don't want to see them cut. I don't want to see, uh, one less deputy, because I like the safety that I have in my county. You know, maybe some counties prefer that and they should be able to decide that, instead of having it dictated from above. Cause I don't think the states like being dictated from the federal government. But for some reason, they don't mind doing it the other way around.
It seems to be getting more of what we call unfunded mandates, uh, we've had more in the last couple of years than we have forever, you know, as far as, uh, things we have to.
Well, if the state thought it was so important to back the blue, why did they put any money in that, right?
That's.
That tells you right there, we're, we're concerned about it, but we're not going to do anything about it, we're going to make the counties do.
They gave the benefit to the age sixty-five and older. Nobody asked us how that was going to affect us.
We don't want you, we don't want you to, we want to lower property tax, but we're going to mandate and dictate that you spend this property tax is what the state says. So.
Yeah, we did the national forever.
So you have the averages?
Between agreeing the averages where we're at, Kyle has supervisor in a thousand and twelve fifty stipend, attorney at twenty-seven twenty-three, second floor at twenty-eight hundred and fourteen, sheriff at fifty-eight seventy-nine. However, just to add a ILO two cents, I do like round numbers.
That's.
So I'm just throwing it out there, twenty-eight for the attorney, three thousand for second floor, six thousand for sheriff.
Let's do it.
And I'm not trying to anyway your calculations.
Round numbers are easier for everybody to work with.
I like the round numbers too. What, what were your round numbers again?
Makes them easier to remember.
Twenty-eight for the attorney. Twenty-eight for the attorney, three thousand for second floor, six thousand for sheriff.
Those are numbers just for them to work with, we can't make a motion, no resolution.
That's right.
Those are just up, plug them in numbers. Not written in.
So they just kind of need to have word that we're not going to change that number.
But did you say for the supervisors?
Saying thousand and twelve fifty.
Thousand twelve fifty.
Boy, I didn't drag that down very much, did I? Damn it, thirty-one percent.
That's democracy in action.
Hey, those, are we in agreement?
I'm in agreement.
That's, that's how this is supposed to work.
Not a motion or a resolution.
But they need something to go forward with.
Not written out, don't.
Well, they can use that number, but that don't mean I'm going to vote for it in the end, I promise you that right now.
Well, that's prerogative.
To be continued.
Number, but it's, I was, without knowing what we're doing with the arrest of the numbers.
Well, it is hard.
That's why I damn hard, it seems like it's been a waste of our time.
Section gives us that out at the end, at the bottom, and we come to our, at the ALN, we find out, we can't afford to do anything, we have an option to say, this is zero company. I mean, I think.
I mean, that's probably a little extreme, but I get your point.
I mean, that's, there's that caveat, cause other years, we, we've already promised reasons and we haven't even finalized the budget.
Well, they say insurance is four percent, right?
So, you know.
They say, nobody's been in here to talk to you.
You know, that's the thing, is last year, we didn't talk about, we didn't talk about that today, where we, at the end, insurance came back after everybody was done and we ate that as the county, which is a hell of a large chunk of your overall, what, what it's cost, so it is a salary act. It's part of that money, you know, part of your compensation, there's the word I was, you know, I mean, so the county, I think the county fairly compensates everybody in this courthouse and the office. We, we do try to find ways to adjust and account for the costs that have been going up.
Wow, I guess.
I think some of the, a lot of the other counties are always trying to compare themselves to, I think they're just spent for it. I think they just spend too damn much, but that's good for me personally.
They have higher revenues sometimes too.
And that could be too.
I think I shared that valuation report with you.
Yeah, I did say that, I was looking.
I have it.
We were forty-six though, so the valuation first, or, I don't think they're all that different with some of that. I just think they spend more, you know, I mean, they just got supervisor that are okay with spending. I think that's what I got hired to do, is to be the Scrooge, you know, I mean, to be the fair Scrooge, but to be the Scrooge.
Well, and there are, uh, in my research, I'm asking how much they pay for insurance and I have a list of questions that I ask. And, uh, it's kind of, it's not all the thing, it's not all apple and apple, there's some bananas out there.
But if I compare it to my industry, you know, which is extremely dependent on ag, just like the rest of this one. Right, you know, with the hog markets being where they have it now, it's been tough for them people. And I've got to kind of keep all that into consideration and I'm going to tell you something, I've been on the cleanup.
It's not as many mortgages going up.
You know?
Well, I think we have our, our numbers here to go forward with. And, uh, next week, we're getting to our budgeting sessions. I appreciate everybody that came, Colin, thank you for clarifying where we're at with our process. And, uh, we all meet next week over budgets.
Starting early.
Let's move on to employee wage publication.
That was in our bag. It was, it wasn't complete, they're rerunning it. It was only half. It went to the Ms. So it wasn't even half.
Yeah, we had Sherry.
Deep frogs.
Basically, my bottom line just shows that we're in balance. The, um, change in outstanding, that's just posting checks that aren't third. And anything else on here, um, is, uh, just put where the, uh, department head of that line item tells us to put it. So, um, as, as discussed in the past, what, what we're worried about in treasurer's office is that we balance out at the bottom line.
That is the most important thing.
That is.
That is.
What do you, how much was those new, uh, fee for, um, motor vehicle?
So our, so our motor vehicle fees, um, we, we've been, we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more, um, next week when we do our, my budget presentation, but with the new fees that we're getting from the state, we ran some numbers in my office. And in January alone, it looks like we're going to bring in, um, a hundred thousand dollars more than we did last year. And in January alone, it looks like we're gonna bring in um a hundred thousand dollars more than we did last year because of new fees.
Wow.
Wow.
Now, that's not gonna be every month because it's a it's how much, you know, people purchase and um out of county transactions and all that kind of stuff. But we we pretty much, January tends to be the same each year, real close, February, you know, every month is the same, but and we were, we dropped our jaws when we did that report. But it is looking as if it's going to be at least one hundred thousand dollars more.
And what percent will that stay in the county?
That's ours to keep.
That's the this county. None of that we send on to the state.
No, that's for January.
January.
Yes.
None of that will send to the state.
That's our money.
Okay.
Yes.
So did that report tell you how many of the out of counties are coming over to Crawford County, that ten dollars that we get to uh take? Are we getting a lot of that like we thought we would?
Um, yes, and and on my budget line item, it shows that one, that one right there, the hundred thousand dollars is like I'd have to go grab or I'd have to.
So that is gonna answer what makes up the biggest share of that hundred thousand? Why, you know, what what would that be?
We get like twenty dollars more for um titles, you know, just like Sarah's department. The the motor vehicle department fees have not been updated since, I think, nineteen eighty-four. So this is just money.
Forty years ago.
Yeah, this is just money that the county is going to keep now for doing these services here in Crawford County.
And that's fair. That's that's the way it should be.
Those are, and that's good to know because when we go talk to them, I'm literally, those are kind of things that will make that difference up of the lack of property.
But those are money that you're putting back on the taxpayer. I mean, you come in, it's not money the state's giving us for doing their job. We're charging the taxpayer more for it. So they still are not compensating us.
They still are.
They're not compensating us for what we are doing to make their job easier.
Services we provide.
The, yes. Yeah, so it's still not fair.
So that of that, that wasn't them giving ten dollars of their cut?
That's money that we're charging.
They're just upping it. That they've allowed us to charge.
They charged.
Right, that's money they are allowing us to charge you to come in and do business in my office.
Yep. Well, he can, but if somebody else.
Well, you're gonna get charged too, Jean.
I'm doing the same thing with you too.
Treat everybody the same.
Right. Customer, yeah, but.
Yeah.
So it's a new tax.
Different. From PayPal, new tax.
And it it's it's minimal. I mean, it's very minimal. And if they would have jet gradually increased it like everything else is increasing, it's not out of line. The the little bit more money you're paying to do your works, I mean, to do your.
So is that for licensing or titling for title titling our vehicles? The ten dollars, what 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 exactly service do you add that to?
Well, the the driver's license has already had the extra fees for the last few years.
Yep.
Ten dollar convenience fee for out of county.
Okay, so you won't be charging me?
For, I'm not gonna charge you for that.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dollars um to test for CDLs, twenty-five range test.
And you get to keep that?
And we get to keep those. And those are fees that you don't have to charge and all the counties aren't. But I don't feel like I'm doing a service to the taxpayer by not charging them. Okay, the other fees are ones that are motor vehicle. So when you purchase a vehicle, you're going to get a new title, you know, all of those additional. And like I said, they're very minimal. If they would have done a gradual increase each year, it's still probably lower than what it would have been.
So every time I buy a vehicle, it's the next ten dollars, twenty dollars, twenty dollars, twenty dollars.
But we're, I mean, how many counties do you run this?
You save that on gas.
We're we're.
Very few.
And you're saying, oh, that twenty-five dollars.
This saves the gas that you would and and that that is not a convenience fee, the twenty-five dollars. That's to actually test.
The service you buy.
That's for, yes.
I mean, that just kinda tells you how many transactions go on at your office, because that's an in- increase of, you know, so you you guys just do an overwhelming amount of transactions.
Yeah, when when Amy and Chris and I were running the numbers, I'm I jaws, we're like, this can't be right. And we went and looked at it again. That is.
Yours is the same way over there, though. I mean, you do a lot more than.
Right, if the numbers don't show it, but when you look at the whole picture, yeah.
These are all, it's all good information for us to.
Call the translator.
You know.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. That would sound like good news tooth day.
Well.
Army, uh good to go. I wanna, it's on there to just take action. I don't know if you wanna just approve it so you can sign it or.
Motion approved.
Kyle made a motion approved uh employee wage, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm backing up. Sherry's treasure report. That's what you're.
Yeah, I have a treasure report.
Motion.
Second.
I sorry, second.
Okay.
And second by tie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we can move on to employee wage publication.
Accepting one.
Everybody, this was a new packet. Wages.
You have to publish them every year.
We have to do this every year, stubbing two wages.
Yep.
Much to it.
Will we approve the employee wage publication for twenty twenty-four?
Motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor, vote aye.
All right.
Aye, she votes aye.
Is this complete?
Yeah, they they didn't have.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
Got it.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
One sort to citizen input.
Ah. I'd ask for some education as far as the deputies and the county offices. Are are there any hourly employees in any of the second floor offices or are they all deputies?
Oh, attorney is all.
Colon's.
I don't have deputies. I have an assistant prosecutor, but that's it's a different, it's a different thing. It's it's a picture of the county attorney code. But the other three offices, everyone in the office is a deputy.
Correct.
And when it comes to wages or whatever, or the, when the head of the office gets a three percent raise or whatever, then all the deputies get the same.
Eighty-five percent to eighty-five percent.
Percentage.
They get a three percent, but it'll be a, like Terry's, like Mary gets eighty-five percent, like Megan's, is she what, sixty, seventy-four, sixty-four, sixty-four, whatever, something, I remember looking it up, but that percentage, there's three percent of the, it's it's a different percentage because they're only like eighty-five percent, so they get a three percent raise on their eighty-five percent. How's that?
Okay, so all right, there's no room for, you know, if one employee has more skills or has developed faster, since they're then higher.
There is, there is unless they're already maxed out at the eighty-five percent. So there's room within that if they're only at sixty percent. That's what we call a double bump. They get a percentage of the elected official, but then they can raise a percentage as well.
One caveat is too, each elected official can adjust them however they see fit. I mean, they can leave them or they can take them down, they can raise them up. I mean, they can they they have poor performance, they can lower that percentage, I mean, of the.
So I think kind of a little back history on that as well. Um, the move to deputies on the second floor was we got away from unions. And well, we put it underneath department heads to make those decisions. I was gonna stay away from, you know, having to go to arbitration, you know, but it's a double edged sword. I mean, they the flip side of that coin is they're tied to that elected official. If board supervisors came in and said, hey, the budget is, we fell off a cliff, we have no new money. Um, we're gonna get zero raises. They're also tied to that. Whereas, I call involved, this is not tied to a percentage.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we're, we don't really know, because Iowa code says that the super, the the department, the elected official decides how many deputies they want and upon uh approval of the board of supervisors through resolution and recording in the minutes. And so if somebody, if they said they had seven and the board didn't want to approve that, we still could, uh but we just, nobody has ever brought that up in all of the years. So it's it's been that way since the beginning of and it gets to happen during treasury vaults time is all I can gather.
She was the treasure.
She was the treasure, yes, so a little back history.
Thanks for coming in.
Absolutely.
Any other on board? Zoom, do we have any?
Raise your hand.
User's still there.
You have one more. Um, it was in personnel changes, but it has no information on it. It has a name and has a date of hire or a data.
I did get an email about that.
Nothing on it, and wages.
Here's what it says. Uh, please see the attached sheet. I'm not able to send over Delia's completed info sheet as I need to still meet with her and see what she wants for insurance, et cetera. Kim said this morning she will be starting today instead of the thirtieth, unlike what we stated earlier. She will be starting in home health hospice as a full-time registered forty-hour a week uh employee at the rate of thirty-nine dollars an hour. That's just an email.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if that's the one attached.
Well, they need to get something in writing and send it to us and we'll put it on next week's.
Yep.
I see, because she's been getting paid for a couple of weeks anyway, so.
Yep, just wanted to.
So you know, it may come around your table and so it was not approved.
I didn't think we should approve it not knowing what the wage was or what the circumstance was, and I don't know that email.
Next week, hopefully you'll have the rest of the, hopefully the rest of the story.
But you'll have been working for. It'll just go on.
Well, and and if we talk about that too at NCL, I mean, on those quasi-independent boards that a lot of times they have the direction to hire and then make those, and it is a recognition by our board to file away for the honor.
But it still is a recommendation, it's not, you know.
Right, my office doesn't make changes to the payroll willy-nilly, so we need that documentation.
We appreciate that.
That's why it's on the board's table.
Yep, yep, but it was, that was incomplete, that's why I didn't think we should.
I'm gonna get it completed and walk.
Sign it.
Next week we'll pass it around.
If we have time. All right, make a motion wager.
You have a motion?
Your motion, say it. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye. So what's our appointment schedule for next week?
Start on Monday.
At eight to four.
Eight to four.
Eight to four.
Thousand and thousand and twelve.
Monday, Tuesday, night.
The twelve fifty was the stage.
For Dave.
Meeting and then the afternoon will be twelve thirty to four.
If we can start a little earlier, that'd be all right, but we'll see how that goes.
We're gonna get lunch.
This one was stuck.
Do you want, you mean on Monday, you wanna start earlier than, yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Keep, we'll keep it a short, be enough.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So do you wanna have Caitlin next week if we got budgets and we're to follow me?
You're interested.
Because really, if we can get doing.
We can do it. I I just wanted to get her in front of us so that we can get a feel, so that we're not sitting here worrying that we're not gonna have anybody.
If we want to do the budgeting, they are disagreeing.
Yep.